Beginning June the 27th, if you have an outstanding misdemeanor or a felony warrant, we are giving the public a chance to clear their warrant by taking advantage of being processed at the satellite booking office in lieu of the county jail. This is also an opportunity to avoid your name being published on a criminal warrants list and being arrested at your home or place of business. For further information, call 546-2093 or visit epcounty.com and click on "Operations Safe Streets."
Commissioner Andrew Hagerty would like to invite you to his weekly breakfast meeting that takes place every Wednesday at 7:30 a.m. at Danny's Diner located at 4690 Trans Mountain Road. Every week he has a different speaker who will be discussing topics of interest for the community. So if you live in the northeast, west side, or anywhere else in the county, come and join us for the breakfast meeting.
Don't wait in line, pay online. Visit the Financial Recovery Division website at http://www epcounty.com/budget/financialrecovery.html to make your payments online or find out more about our kiosk locations. We now accept payments on misdemeanor, felony, and justice of the peace cases.
You can now watch Commissioners Court meetings on YouTube. Go to youtube.com and search for "El Paso County Commissioners" or "El Paso County, Texas." Subscribe to our channels to see our latest videos.
Did you know that you can save money on the cost of your medications? And doing so is easy. In 2015, the County of El Paso launched a prescription discount card program from coast to coast. The cards are available to all El Paso County residents free of charge and everyone qualifies. You can pick up a card at any county office location, Walgreens, Walmart, CVS, or Target pharmacies, or simply print the card at www.coast, the number two, coastrx.com. Happy savings.
Did you know the County of El Paso's purchasing department is responsible for ensuring that all items and services needed by various county departments are purchased in the matter required by the state of Texas? Whether through formal sealed bids or smaller dollar quotations, the county purchasing team is dedicated to finding the best contracting return on your taxpayer dollars. Additionally, the purchasing department is responsible for the tracking of inventory within the county and properly disposing surplus to public auctions. For questions about how to become a vendor and compete for county contracts, or to learn more about public auctions, please contact us at telephone number 915-546-2048.
The 346 District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for the specialty court, the statutory criteria includes be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard, and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director, at 915-546-2119, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information. Did you know that the County of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the purchasing department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the purchasing department at telephone number 915-546-2048.
Good morning. Today is Thursday, July 26, 2018. Commissioners Court is meeting in special session. Item number two from the regular agenda is to receive a presentation from the Economic Development Department on the return on investment pertaining to existing chapter 381 agreements. Good morning.
Good morning Judge. Good morning Commissioners. Jose Quiñones, Director of Economic Development. Joining me here is Amara De La Canal and Arturo Marquez. For this presentation, which is an overview about the, we're going to talk about the 381 portfolio. Arturo's been heavily involved in looking at this and leading the department in looking at it from different angles and really focusing on the return on investment because that's been a question that's been asked before. So we've given it a snapshot view of this. And I'd like for you all to turn your attention over to Arturo who is giving you that overview.
Good morning Judge and Commissioners. Director of Marquez from the Economic Development Department. As Joe mentioned, we are looking at the snapshot of what it really must look like as of today and what we're expected to receive throughout the next few years. Now, just to kind of give you an overview of what we have so far as of today, July 2018, is that we have 22 different agreements that are executed, that haven't executed, and all 22 of them fall under seven different categories. These categories are hotels, mixed use, retail, business, healthcare, advanced logistics, and sustainability. Now, in this slide, you'll be able to see how much has been allocated into each one of these investments. And this is from the private sector's perspective. This is how much has been put into these different categories. Now, in summation of the incentives that we've given to these businesses, that actually equates to $36,800,000 with a total investment of $521 million that has been invested into the El Paso region. Now, as you may see, some of these, while some have multiple businesses that have invested, so for example, the hotels, they do trade a majority of, not majority, but a large portion of the investments. Others where they are only single units, they do have a substantial investment into our community as well. Now, the agreements at the glance currently, well, actually this one, there's a change on this slide, but right now there are 12 projects in development phase, meaning that they're currently either renovating their building or in the construction portion of that project, while there are 10, and please excuse the typo there, but there are 10 projects that are currently in operations. That means that they have received their certificate of occupancy and are now operating. With the agreements, we have created 628 new hotel rooms in El Paso, or will end up creating. Again, this is a snapshot of current year to the future. And also something that might interest you is the jobs that have been created. So far, this is, we have 3,620 jobs that have been created with the agreements at an average rate of 32,000 per job.
And do the changes that you mentioned include Pacific Union Financial? Is that why?
That is a great question. Sir, that does not. We have kept the numbers the same until we receive official notice from Pacific Union. Until we do so, we are not able to change anything from this. We can give you an update once we do receive an official notice from the company.
The 3,600 does include the 600 jobs that were included?
Correct, yes. The 32, this number, the 3,600, does include those numbers. Now, the way we looked at the return on investment is that we took into consideration three aspects into this. We took the economic impact, the fiscal impact, and intangibles. Now, the economic impact is anything that's not strictly related to fiscal impact to the county. This is the employment that are created, the wages that they're paid at, and just the economic output that is created through the execution of these agreements. Now, the fiscal impact is more related to the county's side of it. How much are we generating in new taxes and new revenue? How much are we collecting in real property? How much has been invested into the existing property? And then the last one is intangibles, which really is, there's no real number to put on these ones. It's just simply is a better outlook for El Paso. Are we creating a better environment? Are we becoming a safer county? Are we creating a quality of place, quality of life? These are the things that we just simply cannot put a number to them, but they do account to reasons why we go towards these agreements. Now, first look at it is the economic impact. The economic impact, as it sits, is that one job, for every one job that has been created through these agreements, it has taken the county 3,169 of the investment to create these jobs. Again, just to kind of reflect back on the previous slide, this is looking at the wage of the jobs going at $32,000 per position. So if you compare that $3,000 investment from the county's perspective to create a position of $32,000 annual pay. Now, we use a system right now, we currently use a software to determine what the impact is to the community in terms of jobs. And taking into an average, we have determined that it takes 1.6 additional jobs out of the creations of the 3,200 positions that we've mentioned before. Now, this is an average, and again, this goes back to the first slide of the types of industries that we've incentivized. Now, not all of the agreements that we have are job-related, so again, this is very specific to the ones that are very specific to the ones that have jobs connected to them. Again, this is just a reiteration of the amount that has been traded, the 3,600, at the $32,000 annual rate, or annual wage. And just to give you a quick overview, this was actually just pulled out of the feds. This is just a chart of what El Paso, the city of El Paso, no, I'm sorry, the County of El Paso has seen in the job growth rate throughout the past few years, just to kind of give you an idea of, you know, this is not strictly related to the agreements that we've executed, but just as an overall to the whole community. Now, fiscal impact. Now, fiscal impact is actually divided into three portions. With the agreements, we look at three different things, well, actually four, divided. The first one is the hotel occupancy tax. As the 22 contracts that exist, there is only one that's strictly related to the hotel occupancy tax. But again, if we go back to the first slide, you'll notice that the investment that has been made into the hotel sector is again substantial, which is a reason why we decided to add this slide. Now, this slide actually shows you the overall impact that the hotel occupancy tax has had for the past few years. This is a collective measurement, and right now we're averaging about 115 hotels in the County of El Paso. So again, this is a collective figure of the growth that we've seen throughout the past. Now, this chart was actually used to project the hotel occupancy tax revenue that we are expected to gain from the, again, the current existing agreement. As you may see, we have a positive trend here in the County of El Paso for the hotels. And again, this is a collective output. Now, the next one is the sales, sales tax. Sales tax is actually involved in about four of our total agreements, which again, this is looking at a collective measurement of all the sales collected in El Paso. And this again was used to make a projection of what the county's sales are going to be expected out of the projects that have sales tax directly tied to them. Now, all of these numbers have been seasonally adjusted, so if you see a trend or divvy up between the lines, they have already been adjusted to show actual numbers. This is both for the sales and the hotel taxes. As we all know, there are some certain quarters throughout the year that receive more sales than others. You're looking at your Christmas sales, you're looking at your specific quarters that create additional revenue more than the other ones. And this has been adjusted to show, to spread them out and then show them what they really mean. The last one is the real and personal property. Again, we are looking at four different taxing aspects when we're looking at these agreements. We're looking at hotel occupancy, we're looking at sales, and the last two are real and personal property. Real and personal property, of course, is more directly tied to what the incentives that we offer relate to, simply because our incentives are mostly based on the real and personal property. Now, as you'll see, the, well, actually not as you see, but the actual projection that we've made in this analysis only accounts for 13 years. 13 years that starts in 2018, which is this year, up to 2030. The reason why is because the, most of the agreements have been executed within this timeframe. So although we executed our first agreement back in 2006, we did not see completion of that project up until 2009, which we did not see an actual payment go out until 2010. Therefore, going back that many years will not really reflect what we're trying to do or what we're trying to see with these current existing agreements. So therefore, we've done the analysis based on 2018, again, including those 10 that are in operations and 12 that are expected to start operating within the next few years. Now, with the real and personal property, you'll see three different lines here. The blue line represents the income, the revenue that the county will receive throughout the years. You know, as the projects continue to grow, to finalize in terms of completion of construction, the evaluation of those properties will obviously see an increase throughout the years. Now, of course, we are estimating, or we are comparing the revenue versus what we're actually paying out to these companies. Now, what we're paying out to these companies is displayed here with the green line. So the green line represents all the rebates that we are expected to pay throughout the 13-year term. And as you see, there's a decrease because as, you know, as these contracts fade out, as these contracts finalize, of course, we are seeing less and less payouts. Now, just to reiterate, this 13-year analysis encapsulates most of these agreements. What that means is that even though we have agreements that will finalize, maybe in five or six years, simply because they were executed a couple of years back, we want to make sure that we're encapsulating most of these agreements so we're able to make a better determination of what's really going on with revenues and expenses that relate to the county.
Question?
Yes?
We never give more than 100%, so why does that one-year area goes higher than, does the rebate more than that?
Yeah, actually, that's a very good question. I'm really glad you asked that. So right now, we do have the agreements that are strictly based on tax rebates. Anything that is not tax rebate, which has been only one single project, there is, there's a cash upfront, I guess you could say, from the county's perspective. Because there is no rebate, meaning that there's no first inflow to the county, there's only an outflow from the county, that's where you see that.
Is that the training one we did?
Correct, yes, that is exactly what. And this is reflected through that. And that's a very good question. Thank you for asking that.
Another question, because of what just happened with Pacific Northwest. We're giving cash, cash upfront for training. What if they do what Pacific Northwest just did and close tomorrow and make cash?
So in the contracts, there's protections. I'd have to pull exactly what the protection is in that particular contract, but there are protections that we should have in our contracts that would protect or require some kind of clawback for the county if they did not follow through on their commitments.
I even wondered if there was some kind of penalty, which, you know, this is an unfortunate situation and nothing was paid out, but the time that was invested in getting this collaborative to be executed, and then months later they closed the doors, is there a penalty that can be assessed? I don't know if that's even feasible, but it's unfortunate. But had we given them the money, we need to make sure those protections kick in.
And if they go bankrupts, our chances of clawing you back are pretty small. So that's another reason to be really wary of giving people the money and the cash before the rebate comes in so much faster. You can ask and use it back.
Well, and it, but it depends. And I'll tell you a couple of things what I think it depends on. So I think training and certain development funding is not necessarily a bad thing, even if the company doesn't, it does leave. I always think the training is actually the best type of investment we can do because generally with the way you set up those training funds, you don't just give them the money. You work with EPCC, for example, I'm just picking a local education provider. It's a three-way agreement. So company needs this workplace skill trained, EPCC provides it, we agree to reimburse or pay EPCC to provide that specific training to those employees or that potential workforce. Those people don't leave, even if the company does leave. So we've now upped the skill level of our workforce in our community, and they're not going to leave. They generally don't leave. And if a company goes bankrupt, they're definitely not leaving to follow the company. The other thing about, is if we do, if we gave funding, and I know we haven't explored this option, but I know it's a topic for discussion over the next couple of weeks in budget, is the concept of if we did give funding to help develop areas of the community to support large businesses or to support different types of business, things like doing, improving roadways so that a business can go into an area. That's going to stay there, that infrastructure's going to stay there even if the company doesn't come in, and it makes it more attractive for another company to come in. So just, there are some times when you would consider those upfront, but we would definitely also have to look at the cases where if it was some direct benefit to the employer, that we would need some clawback or some legal mechanism to go back and protect ourselves.
Commissioner Harry, I would like to mention that Will Pfizer's loyalty, it was executed on March 2018, and it's for the 381 agreement, it's a three-phase disbursement. So we haven't dispersed, they have to meet certain requirements, and then they have to pay for some of the training that we We issued two grants. One of them is customer training, and the other one is impact.
No, I think the problem is we made such a grandiose deal about Pacific Union coming, and we made it so bold and so quickly they left, that I think it reminds us that just because it sounds great today, tomorrow might find us, we need to be careful about. It's, the great thing for us is we could say, we didn't give them anything. They came, they left, didn't hurt us, other than, you know, employee time, but where if, yeah, we gave a million dollars. Why? Because they were going to do great things.
Right, there's a risk.
Yeah. So that's where I just, it just adds to the, because I mean, we were talking for a long time about how great this company was and how it was going to do great things and how powerful they were and how strong they were, and now they're not coming.
Right.
Oh, okay. So I just want to just finish up explaining this graph. So in terms of what this all means to the county is, here, the last line is the red line, which actually signifies the baseline. What this means is that if we were to take every single one of those properties that we have incentivized and there had been no investment into these lots or into these properties, the county would be receiving a baseline of these taxes, which again is shown by the red line. Now, the improvement to the county in terms of fiscal impact is actually shown between the portion of the blue line and the green line. Again, the green line represents the rebates that we're issuing out, and the blue line represents the revenue that the county is generating through new taxes throughout the war. Now, the last of the portions or assessments, again, goes into intangibles, and this again relates to what are we creating through these projects? Again, these are, these are factors that cannot be given a figure. We cannot simply put a dollar amount into these benefits that creates into our community, which as mentioned is the quality of place, the quality of land, national recognition, you know, workforce retention, as Betsy was saying, you know, once we incentivize these businesses, you know, we are essentially, you know, improving our workforce. And one of the ones that, you know, is mainly big for El Paso is safety recognition. We are one of the safer cities in the U.S. Now, so what does this all mean to the county? Now, as mentioned before, we are looking into four different things, the sales tax, property tax, the hotel occupancy tax, and the personal property tax. Now, looking, taking all of this into account in that 13-year term, what we did is we issued out a formula to create the, or not create, but to analyze the internal rate of return. Now, this internal rate of return has been substituted to represent the return on investment. Now, I want to reiterate that the 13-year period has been used for this because if we go beyond this time, of course, any renovation, any new construction will generate new taxes, and if you spread it out long enough, you are going to see a positive return on investment, which is outside of what we're trying to analyze within this study. To create it within that 13-year term, we're able to determine, you know, within our timeframe of the existence of these agreements, what is the county really getting back within that timeframe? Using that formula, we have come up with a 23% return on investment. Now, you all have mentioned something that is very, I guess noteworthy in this statement. There are companies that, of course, you know, unfortunately, could potentially leave, you know, before the term of the agreement is over, or before they have actually made any changes to the, to our properties, to our revenue. So I would not want you guys to get fixated on the amount, on the very specific number of the 23%, but rather make sure that this return on investment stays positive and stays within that number. You know, if it fluctuates to 26%, if it fluctuates to 20%, and it will, of course, because the ones that we have estimated here are simply projections. If it fluctuates within these numbers, then we're still at a positive return on investment to the county. Again, we cannot, you know, foresee things such as, you know, Pacific Union from happening, and sometimes we cannot even stop it. But as long as we maintain this range for the return on investment, I still think that the county sees as a positive improvement on what's both beneficial to the community and beneficial to the county. All right. With the agreements, of course, there are some questions, and this is what the department is striving to do with the new existing agreements. And it's something that has already been, or has already taken place within the past few agreements that have been signed. As the department moves forward and continues economic growth, we seek to improve 381 agreements by making future agreements more efficient, more transparent, more certain of what we expect the companies to do, and simpler to read, to make sure that the companies are well aware of what we're trying to accomplish with the county. And also, we're implementing a more specific target of what we want the companies to meet before we issue out payments. Now, with all this said, you guys were all given, I'm sorry, commissioners were all given a chart of what the existing 381s look like, the specifications in terms of what we're hoping to gain from these companies and what we're expected, what they're expected to comply with. I now turn it back to Mr. Quinones, if you guys have any questions regarding this.
Thank you, Arturo. I think you did a very good overview about what is return on investment. And remember that in perspective that this is a snapshot, and a year from now, we'll be taking another snapshot of this. The important thing to point is that from a fiscal impact, we're seeing a positive return on investment. From an economic development, economic impact, and from an intangible impact, there is also positive results that are shown in employment, in wages, in the quality of life, in the quality of place that we're bringing in the projects that the county is incentivizing. And it's very key, very key that we work with our partners. I think a good example of that is the joint application that the city and the county put together and worked for a couple of weeks there, very hard to put it. And we're able to not only improve it by ensuring that the form was easier to understand, it was more concise, it was shorter, and I think it shows a lot of positive outcomes from industries and companies that are coming here where they see that type of partnership occur. The other part of what we have here, we provided to you as backup, is the 381 summary. And that's the one that I think historically Economic Development has provided to you all as an overview. This is kind of also like a short summary of what is going on on a more detailed basis on your existing portfolio. And another month or so, we will be providing you a snapshot report. We call it the Chapter 381 Portfolio Report. And that will show through the end of this fiscal year how this, how the portfolio has performed. This summary doesn't provide you. The summary is more, you're going to give you information on what is going on in terms of the status of the projects, and if you see any change, then we use this, this is kind of our worksheet. Maida oversees that, she monitors it, and if you have comments or suggestions on something, she will be glad to take that.
Well, commissioners, out of this, the chart that you have in front of you, there's 12 operational, 12 projects operational, and 10 underdeveloped. If you see the very last one, it's highlighted red, that's First Texas Products. That's one project that already notified us that they're not pursuing their 381 agreement. So therefore, we still reflect it there, so we know what we've worked with in the past, but it's not adding to the number of investment or to the jobs. Now, we have out of all the projects under development, we have two that were reflecting substantial delays. One of them was EPVida. EPVida was executed on July 17, 2013, and then amended December 14, 2015. In order to, this project, unfortunately, was facing a lawsuit. So therefore, the amendment was to extend the term of the agreement in order to automatically extend the time until that lawsuit was settled. So it was late last year that the lawsuit was settled, and Mr. Correa, just recently, during all this time, he lost some of the investors that he had in place originally. So he had to kind of start working the project over again. And now, three months ago, in May, late May this year, he had a heart attack, and then he was ordered to, three months, so not until three months he's going to start working towards this project and putting all the pieces together. So that's one delay for, a delay for EPVida. Now, the other one is Hunt Metro. Hunt Metro was executed in January 2015. So this property was identified, this project is between the city of El Paso and Hunt Metro, and the project is Hunt Metro. So it was identified as a flood plain. So the city wanted to remediate the site and deliver a good site for Hunt Metro to complete the development, because they didn't want to go into any further problems with the development when it was finished. So the city brought ground on 10 points, the North Gate Transfer Center on August 2016, and it was open to the public in 2018, June 2018. So they are now working towards the 1st, 7, and this is happening in July 24, 18. And the PSV will fill material related to flood plain remediation. So all these components, these pieces are working soon in order to comply. They have a 2020 as per the agreement, they have a 2020 date in order to complete construction. So the city is claiming that they're working fast towards remediating all these issues so they can move forward, Hunt can move forward with the development. Any questions?
One other comment today that I wanted to make is that, you know, we look at the average salary of 32,000 right there. So if we, if we, you know, the number of jobs at Pacific Union makes up about 17% of that total number of jobs right there, so it's going to be lower than 3,000 in total. And I'm pretty sure that the price that they were, or the amount that they were going to pay, I think was like around the 45,000 range, right? So it's probably going to bring that number down quite a bit. And, you know, I don't know, I don't know by how much, I don't know if I can make the calculations in my head, I'm not a mathlete.
By any means, but.
You know, it seems worrisome to me though, because it still seems that the wage level that, you know, with the incentives that we're providing is still kind of low. It's around $30,000 a year. You know, the, I think the average wage is a little bit higher than that here in El Paso, from what I understand, around 36,000 or something like that. And so it worries me that we're still, you know, even though we've been spending money on these incentives and, you know, trying to create jobs and things like that, that we're still not hitting even, you know, with the average wages or higher. And so, I mean, I think that's something that we should take into account and think about, you know, as we move forward and looking at our, looking at our policies and how we, you know, spend money on companies that aren't paying high wages.
So just a couple of comments on that, and something you all, something we may need to look at writing into our contracts. But some of these contracts are longer term, and so they may be meeting a higher-than-average wage today, but if we don't put it into the contract that they must maintain a certain percentage, wages catch up. So if they're not sustaining a higher-than-average wage, they, they could actually start compressing closer to the average wage and even maybe get below it, over a 10 or, you know, 10-year contract or even 15. So that's a possibility. I do think that 32,000 is above the higher, the average, the median wage now. I think the median wage now is right around 28,000.
Okay. I thought it was a little higher.
So I think it's 1331 an hour is the average, but I could be wrong.
1315.
1315?
15.
1350 is the median county wage, right?
Correct.
Okay, and so at 32,000, that's 1538. So, so we're slightly higher, you know, our contracts. But if you wanted to, if there was one that was very wage-focused, and we do have rules about higher wages, that's something we could look at writing into the agreements that they must maintain, that we would do as part of the payroll check, we would make sure that it continues to stay X percent above average median wage or county median wage.
Commissioners, and I think you do have a good point about jobs, you know, and I do think that we need to look at that more carefully, because we do have a category for quality jobs where we expect companies that want to be incentivized based on jobs, that they go above, much more above median county wage. Now, we also do have other incentives that are based on capital investment in where we don't provide a certain wage or median county wage level. I think we can address that carefully depending on each project and probably just updating, tweaking our incentives policy a little bit where we look at that and we give the court flexibility to decide if the wages that are being brought in during a capital, for a capital intensive project must be at a certain level or just above median county wage that is acceptable to the court. And we could look at that, I think, because I think what we want to do is this fall, look at doing an update to the policy and see how we can address it so that the court will feel you've got some room to work with, and you give us room to work and negotiate adding to those agreements. And I think that would work very well, maybe favorably for the county to have some flexibility added in with those projects that are not incentivized just based on quality jobs.
Commissioners, any other questions?
Thank you. I appreciate the presentation. It's really helpful to receive some of the impact that we're having so far and long-term what that would look like since the comprehensive presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. That's right, you're not leaving. We're saving, we're deleting that.
See you later.
Item number three, receive a presentation from the Economic Development Department regarding proposed amendments to the county's comprehensive incentives policy and receive direction from the court.
Good morning, Commissioners, County Judge, Jose Quinones, Economic Development, here with the Economic Development Team, a part of the team here. My staff here have been working with you all at the request of looking at some areas of the policies that you all think that should be addressed, and this is one of those where we are providing this for the court's consideration. One of those areas is in the general criteria that we have, the county will have the right to opt out of an incentive agreement if the capital investment being brought in by, or being incentivized by more than 50% of the capital investment, the county can opt out of a project if it wishes to. That's something that I think the court wanted us to consider looking at. So we put that in writing for you all to consider and give us feedback on whether we're going about it the right way. This is also, we send it also to legal, but obviously I think legal is going to work with us to finish out the final, once we get back feedback from all of you. The other thing that we looked at that's very important is in very high-level investment projects, and that is Section 5 of the, Part A of Section 5, under the category called capital intensive project. We realize that once in a while, we, our partners may bring to us a project that brings in a very high level of investment. And we're not talking 50 million, we're now talking projects over $150 million. And so what we proposed here for your consideration to look at is to have two ranges, one that addresses investments of $150 million up to $499 million in investment, will be different to the staggered term incentive of 90%, 75%, and 50% based on a term of 15 years. And then for those blue-chip company, blue-chip investments that we may have in a year coming towards us, so that El Paso County can partner and really look at a headquarters company look coming into El Paso for a very high-level investment that has, addresses not just quality jobs. for a very high-level investment that, that has, addresses not just quality jobs, but perhaps not just a, a very high-level investment, but we're looking at headquarters, looking at R and D, that type of, of development, uh, where you're seeing over half a million dollars, excuse me, half a billion dollars. The company would be considered for a terms of one hundred, seventy-five, and fifty percent staggered terms at a fifteen-year term. And, uh, we go to the next one. Kind of summarize this, we put it to you on a table here. It's, uh, in the table, it shows there under number three, the, uh, the changes that would be added for your consideration. We'd like for you, you all, to give us feedback on what you think, where we need to tweak it on this, how competitive you wanna be here with, uh, with these blue-chip, uh, investment that could come to our community. We don't get these often, but, uh, you know, the last year we, we have been invited as a community to compete on a national level or on a regional level nationwide for, um, some major investment projects that, uh, we made you aware of. Obviously, we wanna present a very strong face of investment. But, uh, I think the, on how you wanna develop this, it's, uh, really what we would ask for your input. So your, your feedback is really critical for us to, to move forward and adopt this into policy in the next month or two.
Any questions?
Do you wanna go back up to each one so that the court can say if there's any?
That's the first one, right there. That's section four, the general criteria.
Because I don't know, I mean, there has been mixed views on this particular topic. This would not obligate us, um, to opt out, but it reserves our right, which we, we already have, it just is to restate our right. But I know there's been mixed views on this about whether, do you wanna discourage companies from getting too many other incentives? Or do we wanna incentivize projects that are already highly incentivized or make it incentivized further after we've incentivized them?
Commissioner?
I, I've got these. On one hand, I get insanely upset that the companies out there are getting crazy amounts of incentives. But on the other hand, that's, their job is to find the best ways to make their business successful. So I, I see both sides, I don't wanna tell someone, don't try to get better deals. You know, if the state's giving away money rather than you or El Paso, it's somebody else. If the United States is giving away money, whether they can tell Paso, it's somebody else. So I think it hurts us in the long run by saying, we're not gonna give it because someone else is giving it. Because we have an incentive, this is what we offer. If you get it from somebody else too, that's your due diligence of, and that's why they hired you to be president or CEO or marketing rep or whatever your job is. But I think by not doing it, it, we may be leaving a lot of money on the table that could come to El Paso from the reasons.
So do you think, Commissioner, 'cause I thought along the same lines, it may be if it's fifty percent local, um, in, uh, incentive as opposed to not considering kind of a state incentive or federal incentive that could be coming down, but just locally, if it equated to fifty percent?
Honestly, I don't mind it being there, 'cause it gives us options, not requirements. But I think we, it's just something we need to be careful of saying, we don't want you going out and finding better state incentives that could come in and make your project better or, or assist, because, because we don't think you deserve it. So, I mean, I don't, I don't too much mind it being there, it's just we gotta be careful, make sure it doesn't become a requirement of the rule, because, 'cause, 'cause, I mean, if the state's gonna give it away anyway, let's let the state give it to El Paso.
My, my thoughts are, are like Commissioner Hager, these, I mean, my thoughts are, why would we even have this? What, once we get a, an incentive to, and my way of thinking, I may be wrong, is what do we care? We're still the same, whether they get incentives or not, our contract is still the same. So, uh, I, I don't think we even need, if we have that, fine, but I, I, it, it just doesn't make any sense to me.
And I'm worried that it might detract people from asking us for an incentive. If they see that in our policies, they're gonna say, well, heck, we're not gonna get any from, anything from the county because.
Or they may, or they may pull it.
Right. I'm just, I'm just. Or they may pull it. And so we'd hate to, to already set that tone coming into a conversation with the community.
But I also see the other side where you look at those numbers, you all. Well, I mean, I just think that, you know, there's something to said, something to be said about, um, you know, when you have private-public partnerships and you have the public paying for the majority of, of a project, I don't think, my, my philosophy is that, you know, the public, the taxpayers should not bear the majority of the risk when investing, when creating an investment. I mean, whether, um, comes from the city or the county, I, I mean, we all, I mean, everybody in this, in, in, in El Paso is gonna, gonna be, gonna be paying for it. And so, you know, it's, and then, um, you know, you also, uh, you know, you come across the arguments that, that, you know, we, that, um, you know, the taxpayers, um, you know, we, we, we have, uh, you know, we're not, we're not business-friendly or something like that. But, I mean, when, when you're having, you know, when, when fifty percent of the project is being paid for by the taxpayers, I think that, that we need to be careful with, I think we need to be careful with that because, um, you know, the public shouldn't have to bear the majority of the risk.
I mean, I, uh, we always have the discretion, you know, when it comes to these projects. I think it's, um, if, as long as there's some language that sort of, that it's not an automatic or that it's not a given that we're just going to, automatic, you, you, since you qualify for incentives, you're gonna get them. You know, as long as there's some sort of language that says that the Commissioners' Court always has discretion when it comes to these projects. Because I think that's sort of the, I know that when we get presentations on, on, on these types of projects and we see that level of investment, they're sort of the default position, well, you know, they, they qualify, so then we have to give it. So long as there's some sort of, it's, it's always discretionary. And I, I know that personally, like, if I, if I ever see a project where, uh, you know, you have over fifty percent investment, I'm, I'm always gonna think twice about, about giving incentives, I, I agree. I don't think it's, it's good where the public is bearing, um, you know, is putting up the bulk of the investment. The whole point of these investments is to ultimately grow the tax base. And, uh, you know, it's, it's, uh, it's difficult to justify when it gets up to that level. But that's just my point, as long as there's something out there that just makes it clear, it doesn't, it's not anything new. I, I mean, we always have discretion on these policies, but so long as it's not sort of a, a given that, that the folks who are automatically gonna receive incentives just because they qualify.
So maybe something a little more broad within the policies, and it may already be in there somewhere, I, I, I wouldn't know. But it says that even, that we take multiple items into consideration when providing an incentive to include percent of, of percentage of investment from other entities or, you know, and maybe not give a number.
But, so what I'm hearing is that maybe we could just, um, look at the policy and see if we have it in right. And if we don't, maybe just kind of wiggle this, we don't tie it to, uh, this fifty percent, a certain number, so that you all and any applicant understands is the court has all the right, it's reserved to, based on incentives and how much incentive and what's at the table, to consider not going forward with incentivizing a project.
Right, 'cause there's several factors you all take into consideration. Not just how much other investment, but what's the purpose of the business? What, what are gonna be their wages, even if it is high capital, if it's gonna be very low wages? I mean, there are so many factors. Um, is it something that's already saturated in our market? Do we already have a ton of those and we don't need more? Or, you know, there's various things that could come in.
Okay, thank you. And on Part E, section five, um, I think this is one that you all wanted us to look at and, uh, then we're open to your feedback.
A little would make me, uh, comfortable, because some of these numbers are so finite, like the, between one fifty to four ninety-nine is up to, is a fifteen-year term. If they were ten to fifteen years, to give the court maybe some wiggle room as opposed to just a fifteen, so that if they, if they do meet that investment amount, it isn't an automatic fifteen years, it gives the court a little more discretion.
Okay.
So where it says up to fifteen, you'd say between ten to fifteen years.
And then maybe the, uh, five hundred million and above to go between ten to twenty? Again, because there could be so many different factors, I mean, it could be a really great company, but maybe a ten-year investment or incentive might make more sense for a particular company and it doesn't lock us into that fifteen to twenty, but it gives us that, that room.
If they're hitting all, all the checklist, you know, they're coming in with high-quality jobs, high investment, it's a target industry, it's STEM, it's just everything, the ideal one. You may have one of those where you may wanna go fifteen, twenty years. Uh, and the other way around, you may just have one that, that is over half a million dollars, but the jobs aren't that great, it's not a target industry, and you all may want to break down the amount.
Right, okay. I don't know how the rest of the numbers of the court will deal. It just gives us more.
We, we need to have as much discretion as possible. We need to have set parameters, and of course, we can go outside of those parameters, but we have to be discretion to.
Comments, Commissioners, no?
Okay. Hope that provides a little feedback to go back and bring back the proposal for the court to finalize.
Yes, and, uh, if you like, uh, if you want us to give you all more time, uh, two, four weeks to, before we move forward with this and propose something?
I think the court's given clarity on feedback today. I think we can make the modifications and bring it back on a Monday in the next couple of weeks.
Yeah. Thank you.
Great presentations today, thank you.
Thank you.
Item number four, receive a presentation from the Public Works Department on the road cut permit fees.
Morning.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners, how are you all doing?
Good, how are you?
Doing good. For the record, Noma Palacios, I'm with the Public Works Department. And joining me this morning is Gilbert Saldana and Jose Landero, who's, who are part of the committee that was formed to address the road cut fees. This is also part of our strategic plan goal on the development, uh, regulations. And at this point, I'll turn it over to Gilbert.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Uh, Gilbert Saldana with Public Works. As Noma mentioned, I am one of the committee members that assisted in composing the, uh, the proposed revisions of the road cut fees. The other members of the committee were Eric Morales from the County Attorney's Office, Roger Sparsen from the Emergency Service District Number Two, Jorge Escarate from the CEA Engineering Group, and Mr. Jose Landeros, uh, from Commissioner Perez's office that will be assisting with, fortunately, the presentation. Um, as shown here, Commissioners' Court adopted the, uh, the road cut permit policy last year in September, as listed on the slide. Uh, none of these items are proposed to be revised with the exception of item one, which is a flat rate of five hundred dollars per road cut. This, uh, project is also an evolution of the policy adopted late last year, where the intent was also to include additional fees authorized by the Texas Transportation Code. Uh, however, since those specific fees need to be part of the budget process, we were not able to incorporate those fees last year. Uh, this is why we are now presenting these revisions, so that they, they can be incorporated into the budget process. Since the implementation of the fees, uh, we observed some of the lessons learned. Uh, first, one fee does not address all needs. Currently, the same five hundred dollar fee would be assessed for a small cut that provides water service to a residential lot as a large utility project that disturbs the majority of the road. Second, we have also encountered some road cuts that were performed without permits. Uh, it appears that the fee that was implemented could be a factor along with the lack of consequence of not obtaining a permit. Um, the committee as identified earlier is the same committee responsible for the subdivision variance revision. We convene to review, uh, and consider these three items. Applying, uh, separate fees for pipeline permits, that was one of, uh, the things we wanted to look at. After reviewing it, legal and, and the whole committee, we determined that, uh, applying those fees for the pipelines would be, uh, considered a, a targeting an industry, uh, based on the, the Texas general opinion. So the committee recommends not to apply pipeline fees and subject, uh, those, uh, projects to, to the road cut visa below. The, we also considered revising the, uh, the current five hundred dollar road cut permit fee. And, uh, Jose will, uh, touch on those, uh, in, in a minute and in further slides. Uh, and also, we have also looked at applying the, uh, the, the additional fees that were, from the Transportation Code, uh, that are roughly proportional to the effect the cut will have on the road. And again, uh, Jose will also address those in, in some upcoming slides. Um, the, the proposed REM fees, which is, um, uh, what we, uh, the acronym that we used for the Road Inspection and Maintenance Fund, uh, are based on and authorized by the Texas Local Government Code, which is shown on this slide. Uh, the purpose of these fees is to provide funds for future inspection, repair, and maintenance of the road cut. As noted on the last sentence, these fees are in addition to any other charge the county is authorized to impose, uh, to repair damage to the road cut, uh, to the road cut because of the cut. This is the continuation of the Local Government Code citation. Uh, Mr. Jose Landeros will now discuss the road cut.
Before we leave that, Gilbert?
Yes.
Uh, on the first slide, you showed some of the exemptions or the exempted entities, uh, creating a road cut.
Yes.
Uh, I, I didn't notice a city, because we have donor holes within the county.
Okay.
Uh, is, is that something that has happened or might happen, or?
Just so I understand, you, you, you wanna know if, if.
Yeah, the city of El Paso creates a cut.
Okay.
Uh, they're not exempted, uh, under.
No, sure.
No.
No, I think.
Should they not be exempted?
No, the, the only ones that are exempt from the road cut fees are the, uh, and if you look at that one slide, that says, um,
That's statutory, right?
Yeah, it's a telephone and telegram. And it's just based on the way the code is written.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So those are the only details.
But there, I don't think there's anything that prohibits the county, if you wanted to exempt the city.
Right.
But that is statutorily who is exempt, correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, so we have that, uh, option?
Yes.
Okay.
So the, the fees and definitions that, that you see here, um, for the, the two various programs, the one that's in existence now is the one that's authorized by the Local Government Code. It's the road cut fee, so anytime someone cuts a road, the county is authorized to charge up to five hundred dollars. Currently, we have a flat fee, as Gilbert mentioned, but that creates a lot of concerns about the impact to a homeowner who's trying to cut the road because they need to extend a water line, replace a water main versus a large utility company, uh, who may be replacing, uh, you know, who may end up cutting about a mile of road up, they would both pay the same. And so the intent with the, uh, Road Inspection and Maintenance Fund, uh, as it's gonna be re, rebranded if adopted by the court, would be to provide a tiered system, uh, of fees that allow someone to pay a lower fee as long as, if they come in before they make the cut, if they are found to make the cut after. If they are found to make the cut without a permit, they would still have to pay the fee, but that fee would be higher. And that's actually gonna be on the, on the next slide. But the, um, the definitions, we, we spent a long time on the definitions to ensure that Public Works had the, um, ability to require the, uh, the applicant to actually come before them, to make all the repairs that are necessary. Um, and if the repairs were not, uh, were not to the county's standards, to require them to come back and make a subsequent repair. Uh, in addition, the, uh, Public Works Department is also gonna be requesting, or, or the county will be requiring a one-year warranty on the, um, on the actual repairs, uh, to ensure that within that one year, um, if something goes wrong. to ensure that within that one year, if something goes wrong, if there's a failure, it's likely due to the construction done by the applicant. And so this is common with subdivisions, parks, all of those entities initially remain under the responsibility of the developer for about a period of one year until the county accepts it thereafter. The fees here, as you can see, the preliminary fees are the fees that someone would pay if they come in before making the cut, ranging anywhere from one hundred to four hundred dollars. Obviously, as the size of the cut is larger, the cost increases. And then the standard fees would be if they were to make the cut without the permit, inspectors found them, and then they would have to come in and then pay an additional fee. So there's nothing statutorily that says the fee needs to be set at five hundred dollars. There is flexibility that the county has, but the maximum is five hundred dollars, and so the structure adheres to the requirements of the statute. And then another thing worth noting is that the statutory language authorizing this fee does require, is specific to the inspection, repair, and maintenance of roads. And so the Public Works has had conversations with the Budget Department and with the Auditor's Office about ensuring that these fees, as they're collected, are designated as a part of the special revenue account that goes to the Road and Bridge Department to help build up funds for future road repairs. So the, this is existing, and these are the revisions to the existing five hundred dollar road cut fee. And that's the rim. The next permit process is known as the Road Entry and Access Permit. And like good public servants, we spent a few months reviewing all of these options. And I think about half of that time was spent trying to come up with a catchy acronym to give these things. And so I think this is finally what we settled on. Wasn't a lot to work with considering it's roads, but REAP was the best that we could do. But this permit fee is specific to capturing the impact or the damage that a road cut causes a county road. This fee, this permit process actually came up as the county was exploring the options it had to regulate the number of pipelines that we saw in the past few years. And it was found out that we had not created a permit process that would allow for the capturing of additional fees for any pipeline or anyone who wanted to enter or access county rights of way. As Gilbert mentioned, one of the big things that we did try to analyze, or that we did analyze was whether or not the county would be able to capture fees based on a pipeline who bored under the road as opposed to doing an open road cut. But legally, we don't have the authority to do that. Other counties in Texas have additional authority that exceeds what's authorized in state statutes. But to ensure that the county complies with what's authorized under law, we're limited to just surface road cuts. So the new policies, a lot of the definitions are consistent with, or are duplicative of the previous process, you can see those. One important change that is on the handout that y'all received that's highlighted in yellow are number seven and number eight. And this holds true for the REAP process. To ensure that we are not being burdensome to residents or small entities that are just trying to access the road for low-impact road cuts, we added a definition that defines, based on the Public Works technical determination, that any cut that's smaller than three hundred square feet is low-impact to the road and would not be subject to having to pay fees under this REAP program. But they would be subject to the previous road cut fee, the rim fund. What that means, though, is that at a larger scale, say, if El Paso water needed to access mains that they have installed in county rights of way, they would be subject to both fees. Both the, they would have to make a payment into the Road Maintenance Fund as well as pull a permit under this program. So the intent there is to ensure that we provide some accommodation for smaller, lower-impact road cuts, which are typically going to be residents trying to access the road for water or wastewater service. Additionally, we added language that ensures that projects that are, that meet a quality of life or that help the county meet its statutory charge to provide for the public safety and welfare of its residents by providing, for example, water, first-time water or wastewater service. Those projects, the fees may be reduced by the Commissioners Court if the court makes that determination. The Transportation Code allows for a lot of flexibility in establishing these fees and these schedules. And so we have the ability, the court has the ability to retain that right. So as to not make a, to not create another barrier for a project. So if there was a first-time sewer project, for example, in Montana Vista, instead of adding to the cost of the overall project, the county could reduce the fees for accessing the road. And the reason why the fees are being collected is because the road, the road's structural integrity is significantly affected by road cuts. And every time there's a new road cut, it furthers the.
It compromises.
It compromises the integrity, right? And the more cuts in the road, eventually you have to repave the road. And so these fees are intended to capture that proportional impact of the lost value, so to speak, or the compromised integrity of the road, and put the funding aside to help pave and inspect and maintain county rights of way. So the fees listed on the next slide here are based on type of roadway. So if you have to open cuts on an asphalt street versus a concrete street, there's a different fee structure for each, obviously, because the cost of replacing those cuts is different. The important thing to note here as well is that the, these fees are based on Public Works estimates of what the repairs would be. And Gilbert will go into a little bit more explanation of that methodology. But effectively, what the county has done, what the county would adopt are also fee schedules that would be updated annually to ensure that the county is always capturing the accurate cost of repair. And the cost per square yard that is going to be charged per cut is not the actual full cost of the repair, right? So it's actually only five percent of the total cost. And the reason why it's only five percent is because Public Works is estimating that out of every repair that is made, only about five percent will fail, which will then require the county to come back and replace or then repair the failed repair. And so that is the methodology that is used to come up with these numbers. But you can see here, obviously, concrete is going to be more expensive than asphalt. And then there's also a cost to improving for unpaved rights of way. So any streets that are unpaved. So this does capture the, some of the pipelines that have come in over the past few years have crossed county rights of way, including unpaid roads. And so this would capture some sort of fee that they would be required to pay for that. But again, anything that involves boring under the road would not be subject to either of the fees.
Something that's new is concrete. We haven't seen that out of concrete, but some of our newer projects will have concrete type of roadways. So that's why this is also included here.
Norma, the one thing I know that we've run into before is I still don't see like a, and maybe this is part of the permit or the process for both, but I know we've had issues with, they make the cuts and then they take too long to do the repairs. Is there any time standards on when they have to come back in? You know, like they're supposed to come in and do the repair, but they're not doing it timely. Where they've already laid their line or done whatever, completed their work, but they haven't come back in and fixed our road.
We, yes, we have, we've considered that. I think right now we were focusing on, is on the fees. As mentioned previously, we're trying to implement these fees that are having to be part of the budget process. So I think we're still working with legal on how to contractually require them to, you know, to meet these requirements. But I think right now we're focusing on these fees. And I think we've mentioned on there as well, on, I believe it's on these REAP fees. Is that where it says that they have to also comply with the timeliness?
Yeah, well, we, I thought we had added, I know we, the committee did have a conversation about that, and it's actually on number one, or under the REAP fees, it says applicant should be required to. It does say, here, to include both original and subsequent repairs as requested and in adherence to reasonable timelines determined by the county. So imagine once the, once the permit is actually, form is actually created, there would be, then that was a discussion, it's more an administrative function, but we do capture the fact that they need to meet with all the requirements that Public Works sets that are reasonable involving the extent of the repair as well as the timeliness of the repairs.
And so that will be addressed in the form, we do have a form currently, and we will add the language so that they know that they have to meet a certain deadline.
And then also, just to add on the slide, just these fees, as I'll explain shortly, were based on the impact of the road. But we also considered the possibility of large projects that would be disturbing, you know, a lot of the surface. And we applied an eighty percent reduction, it's like a bulk discount rate as the project keep increasing, so.
Right, and that's to sort of capture the economy of scale. When you look at the tables that are, that will be on the slides right now, they're also in the document that we passed out this morning. Some of those materials are going to be fixed, like traffic control and other things like that. And so because there's some fixed costs, the larger the repair size increases, the lower the cost per square yard actually is. And so that eighty percent, that twenty percent reduction in cost is to capture that economy of scale that exists once a project exceeds a certain square footage. And again, those were all terminations that the engineers on the committee met with and discussed and developed and are now presented for the court's consideration.
Okay, now, the REAP fees in the different right-of-way surfaces were established based on estimated costs for the county to make these repairs using county rates in the upcoming papers. These estimates were prepared by the county staff and were also thoroughly reviewed and refined with the assistance of Mr. Jorge Escarate, who was a member of the Development Community, establishing a fair and reasonable cost estimate. Since the fees need to be based on the impact of the road, it was estimated that there is only a five percent probability that the repair will fail after the warranty period. Therefore, the fees are based on the five percent of the cost estimate to make the repair. Okay, table one is in the appendix, is an estimate to repair a hundred square yards of a residential asphalt street. The cost totaled approximately six thousand five hundred dollars, which translates to approximately one hundred and twenty-nine dollars and ninety cents per square yard. After applying a five percent rate, the fee is calculated at six dollars and fifty cents per square yard. Table two is the repair of an arterial asphalt street. Because the pavement is typically heavy-duty and will likely require more intricate traffic control, the fees are estimated slightly higher at seven dollars and sixty-five cents per square yard. Table three is a concrete pavement, such as a newly constructed segment of Rollhouse Drive and under construction for East Lake. This fee is calculated at eleven dollars and fifty-one cents per square yard. Table four is for concrete driveways, and the fee is calculated at five dollars and sixty-eight cents. Table five is for unpaid right-of-ways, that's calculated at a dollar ninety-three per square yard. In general, the right-of-ways disturbance of three hundred square feet or less are only subject to the rim fees, as explained by Mr. Landeros. And these are the fees under the rim. And number two, right-of-way disturbances, so more than three hundred square feet are subject to the rim fees above and the REAP fees below, as we just went over. We also want, we're also recommending some credits to be available. There's some projects that have disturbed a substantial amount of the road, and we've required them to basically reconstruct the entire road because they basically compromised the entire road. So we almost get a brand-new roadway in that situation. And so we felt that it was fair to apply some kind of a credit, and we recommend a fifty percent reduction. Then there's also some projects that only maybe disturb half of the road, maybe reconstruct half of the road, we get half of a new roadway, and we recommend a twenty-five percent reduction, which would be seventy-five percent of the permit fees. We identified that partial reconstruction as a minimum of fifty feet wide.
So Gilbert, let me make sure I understand. It wouldn't be a credit of seventy-five percent, it would just be a charge of seventy-five percent?
That's correct, yeah. Just want to make that clear, it's a twenty-five percent reduction.
Okay.
And then, and then as Jose explained earlier, we also recommend a quality of life credit, which is a, we recommend fifty percent, but if there's a situation where the Commissioners feel otherwise, that they want to reduce it any further, or that's also maybe considered as well. That concludes our presentation.
And so each one of the projects come before the Commissioners Court with that recommendation? For example, if there's a quality of life, when the court will want on that every, during that discussion?
Yes.
Yes, the, if adopted as presented, the road reconstruction. So effectively, that happens when the cut is just so large that if you patched it up, it would just not make sense. So it's actually cheaper just to replace the road, right? And so the way that, the language that reflects that in the document in front of you is actually on the, is highlighted on this first landscape-oriented page. And those, those road reconstruction reductions would actually be administrative. So if the Public Works Department has determined that this fee is, or this reconstruction is going to require, or the repair is going to require reconstruction, administratively, they would have the authority to reduce the fee and then just collect the fee. So that would not come before the court. As presented, the only projects that would are those that are requesting consideration for a fee reduction because of their contribution to the health and welfare of the county's residents.
And then we will have internally what constitutes, guidelines on what constitutes a full road reconstruction? What constitutes a partial road reconstruction?
Yes.
Just had one comment. Currently, the five hundred dollar fee is not budgeted. We've received seventy-four thousand dollars so far this year for a total of a hundred and forty-eight, based on the five hundred dollars. So they've already had a hundred and forty-eight fees that they've charged. So if they need additional accounts, that is need to, you need to, what they want to call them, it's already going under the Road and Bridge Fund. We'll continue to put the funds there, and that'll give you a way to analyze your revenues versus what the cost is relating to the cuts.
Commissioner Perez? How many cuts a year do we average?
Last year, we, we, or 2017, we averaged about a hundred and fifty cuts.
A year?
One, two, I think.
Yes.
And I think you've mentioned a hundred and.
One forty-eight thousand. Fourteen thousand of two thousand.
It fluctuates, obviously, but honestly, this year's pretty busy.
If you're definitely on the rise this year.
On the rise, yeah.
And what about, I don't know if it's still in the, I know there were some road cuts that were made that were never patched up. Is this policy, is this now going to be sort of a guiding point for us to address that?
Yes, because of the, of the form, as we have discussed earlier, that we have a form will get, will set deadlines. And we've been working with them, and they have come around and worked on patching everything that was kind of delinquent.
Okay.
So they have been working with us.
So this policy can apply to that, okay?
Yes.
Thank you.
So this is posted for the court's consideration for full action on Monday. Important that is to include that the statute for the, under the transportation. Important that is to include that the statute for the, the, under the transportation code, which is the new permit structure, the REAP, requires that it be made during the budget process. And so your motion on Monday, if you, if the court chooses to vote favorably on this, will have to include language in there that states that it is, that in, that this adoption is in conjunction with the preparation of the fiscal year nineteen budget. And that's all listed on the, on the backup for the item. And then the fees have to be itemized within the actual budget document that the court adopts in October. We've also, again, included language in here that ensures that the court revisits the costs every year to ensure that the costs are accurate. If costs should rise or decrease, the cost estimate tables that Public Works developed can be revised and the fees be revised, just to ensure that we're always being, we're always capturing the proportional impact of a road cut to the county rights of way.
Appreciate all the work that you all did and the committee did to come up with the recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you.
You, David?
Item number five, receiver presentation of the first apartment, Parks and Recreation Division, on the County Regional Park Plan.
Good morning.
Morning.
For the record, Norma Palacios with the Public Works Department, and joining me this morning is Veronica Myers, our Parks and Recreation Director, and Derya Arias. She's part of our engineering staff, who handles all technical aspects as it relates to parks. And she is also responsible for the conceptual designs for all the work that we do in the parks. So today, I wanted to show you a glimpse of what's happening at our parks. We are doing great work at the parks, and we want to continue with that effort. And thanks to the support of the court in allocating additional funding and staff, we've been able to do a lot of the work. I'm going to show you a presentation that shows what our parks looked like in 2012, and what some of our parks look like now. We want to continue that work throughout the county and all our parks. And so in order for us to go after some of the grants, we need to have a master plan. And so, you know, we're here to ask the support of the court for that. In addition to this, I want to show you, you can start the presentation? That a lot of this work was done in-house, and so that was a significant savings of approximately forty percent. So with this savings, we were able to do a lot more. And so we are asking for the court's support so that we can continue this type of work, whether it's through CIP, through bonds, through the general fund. We are committed to aggressively seeking grants, and need the court's support.
And real quick, before we start the video, part of what Norma, I think what we're saying here too is, sometimes we find out, oh, there's some funding here, and it can only be used for parks and port of entry. Or, oh, we might be able to get a grant, well, what are we going to use it for? So while the presentation is going to be ambitious, and I love where the team has gone with this, we know that it may not be realistic to be able to do all of these things at the exact timeline we've designed. But we want to have a plan so that if funding does become available, or if the county does go out to bond at some point, that we already have some projects identified that could be possibly included in those, in those major projects. So, or in any funding that does come available. And that we're not at the last minute scrambling to say, where could we do this, what's the plan?
So that we have shelf-ready projects ready to go.
Yes.
And so, I think that we can start this, I think, I want you to see the difference of what our parks used to look like and what we've been able to accomplish.
And there is no sound at all?
No, there's no sound, just, just pictures that we were able to compile and wanted to share with the court.
These are pictures of it?
Yes, this is, of course, what it looked like.
We couldn't paint like Tree is a Fire or something.
Yesterday.
And this was from 2012, and now we're starting to look at, look at the difference in 2018. It's only a two-minute presentation.
This one is miraculous.
This was our other, it's our.
It's a quality soccer field right there.
And now we do have a public, so here's your new park. And the use of this is amazing. If you go out there, we have people, entire families walking the area, playing.
Which park is this?
This is the Almanoz.
Oh, it's.
That almost looks like a render.
This is our drone.
That's great.
Yes. So this, this gives you a little taste of what we can do with our drones also.
I have a friend that now coaches a soccer team at that park, and he says it's just, it's so much better grass over dirt.
And I think this park, you will really see the difference on this day.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's beautiful. And so like I said, most of the work on these parks was done in-house. And we have limited staff, five, assigned to the outer parks. And so there was delays, but I think now you see why we wanted to go that route, because we could do so much more with that extra forty percent. I'm real proud of this, because this was done in-house also by staff, and you can see the difference. We started this several years ago, and we're glad that we have a new Parks Director that shares the same vision and will move us forward with these other projects that we want to, for them to become a reality. And so we'll start a presentation, I'll turn it over to Mrs. Myers.
Good morning. We'll start with the Parks and Recreation Mission, which aligns with the El Paso County Strategic Plan. Goal four, to create a vibrant community, and it's number eighteen. Vibrant community number one, existing county regional park plan. And the values and goals of the Parks and Recreation Profession and Agencies, are health and wellness, conservation, and social equity. The benefits of parks in general, improved quality of life, healthcare savings, and economic impact to the community. And I'm going quickly through these slides, these are mainly for grant opportunities.
And so the reason these were placed also is if we get approved, we have a lot of this information that will be part of our master plan, and will be submitted for.
I've often told you're not supposed to read a slide anyways.
Yes.
Yeah, so we're not going to, we're going to go through it, I believe.
So our footsteps, again, El Paso County Parks began in 1937, where this got at the park. And now we have ten county parks, courts park, and pools that kind of be on pavements. And we have, we include, are comprised of incorporated and unincorporated communities to include colonias that still have unstable infrastructure. The next slide is demographics, showing the poverty level, ethnicity, and youth population in El Paso. We have a statistics slide showing that El Paso is the, based on the metropolitan statistical area, will be the sixth fastest-growing area in Texas in the year 2020. And as you know, the growth in El Paso is mainly to the far east and far west of El Paso, which is definitely going to put, continue to place a significant demand on facilities of the county. Our parks inventory, this is what the parks that we currently have, that we own. We have a river trail park that we maintain, and we're partners with, to, hopefully, two indigenous districts, Fabens and Torneo.
Yeah, you noted that we lease Gaygo's Park.
And we lease Gaygo's Park. And the next map will show you the parks that we own in green. The red is the ones that we partner with, and the yellow is the one that we lease, which is Gaygo's Park. Next, we'll start with phase one, here's one, two, three. As Betsy mentioned, doesn't mean that it's going to be done in a few years, but it can be done sooner or later. And it includes use of hard ground.
And something that I wanted to mention is, some of these are just basics of what every park should have, the basic requirements. And as we move through the presentation, we are ambitious, we'd like to see other things, better things that we can offer to our communities, but we stay with the basics and initial stages. These are concepts.
As you go through it, sorry to interrupt, I know that at the end, you break down bond funding and the total cost, I guess, of the projects you're outlining in phase one. So the bond funding, we already have it, we just haven't allocated it to any of these specific projects.
Some of them have been allocated in part, and we're still working, we met it, we even met again yesterday on what funding's available. And then we're looking at other sources that we may have funding that's available from projects that are in progress but not complete, but may not use all of their funding that was originally held for that purpose. So we're still working on identifying additional, we definitely don't have funding to do everything here.
So again, these are just concepts based on industry standards, recent events, and funding opportunities. So we'll start with the Escarate Park, the festival area, this is the current condition and where it is in relation to the park. And so bond-funded project number one would be to turn the festival area into a multipurpose use space with some football courts. And football is a derivative of soccer, and it would be, it's similar to a tennis or a basketball court, so. And then some flat fields that could be used when we're not having a special event, we could use those fields to program and to rent.
And something else, what we had thought that we would do is, we would put concrete around the area so that way if we have events such as the Sun City Festival, they can play their stages around the area. We would also have some electricity. We've learned from the events that we've had and what the needs are, so we hope to have this as a multi-use, and I think this is essential for us to have some of the, these big events that are interested in coming to our site.
That was a question I had, is if, if developing this festival site into different fields, if that impacted the ability to use the entire site for festivals like Sun City?
No, because that's what, that was how we came up with this project, that we would go around it and have some type of concrete sidewalk, some type of material that could support their stages. And then the rest would be grass so that they can have the concerts there, or we can turn them into fields that we can use when we're not having events, multi-use area.
Or when we have our own events.
Or when we have our own events, we're planning a lot of those too.
And we know how successful, we saw how successful that was on July 4th, that was crazy.
Hope to do more of that. The next one is Gaygo's Park. So, and then it shows the inventory of Gaygo's Park, which includes a swimming pool, skate park, playground, and fields. The next slide shows the previously approved funding for sod irrigation system and extension of a water line.
And then, so this was a project that was approved, and we had, yes, originally approved. And it was just minimal fields, minimal water.
And then this slide shows the additional funding for $135,000. So based on the proposed project, that may happen with the El Paso Border Youth Athletic Association, we're requesting additional funding to extend the water line just a little longer and properly irrigate the existing fields, flat fields.
And so we would add additional fields also to compensate for the ones that we were reducing if El Paso Border Youth takes over that area. And initially, we look at this one, there were minimal. And so in this one, we hope to compensate for the ones we're losing.
Bond-funded project number three would be Coyote Park, which is in a non-incorporated area of the county of Torneo. This would be, there's an opportunity to work with Torneo Independent School District on a kaboom grant to replace the, a playground in a safer area and provide this unincorporated area of the county with the only public park. And ensure it meets all safety and accessibility industry standards with a safety barrier wall, a walking trail, and some flat fields, and replace their escape park.
This one, we would do a, similar to what we do with Fabens ISD, where, and it's, it's an area where, if you go back to the map of where we have gaps in parks available to the community, it's an area where there is a gap. But the, we would go back, we would go and do a similar agreement with Torneo Independent School District, like we did with Fabens, to, where they maintain the park, but we helped put in some of the initial infrastructure. And right now, the, in this area, the community, there's a demand for this. I think Commissioner Perez, you've talked about this before, and I think previously, we showed some pictures of individuals who walk along the road in that area, because it's, there is, there's no other, there's no other facilities, there's no other place.
There's no parks, this is the only park in the area in Torneo. So we're interested in having some type of partnership that we can help with the park.
And this, the next slide is the same situation. If you look on the right, this is the current state, there is no recreation opportunity for those residents in the desert acceptance area or sports dance area. So it would be a linear park with minimal landscape and a walking trail, about a mile long. Bond-funded, bond-funded project number five would be Estrella Park to replace the existing skate park, so you can see the condition it's in, and what we would replace that with.
And this is bond-funded by the production CIP funds for this, the penny CIP funds for this.
And when you say bond-funded, it's, it's, you've already, yeah, you've already factored that into the total amount.
If there's the opportunity to have some of those funds available for this, that's what we, yeah.
Can we, can we, can we, bonds would be already?
Yeah.
And, and the biggest concern on these is that the abuse, we don't want to leave these structures out there because we don't want anybody to get hurt, you know, some of them was, work weren't. So I think at the cost of $45,000, I think it makes sense to replace them, since the parks are looking real nice, but then you have this kind of a nice hole.
Bond-funded project number six is the same thing, basic, resurfacing some basketball courts, so four basketball courts throughout the county. And bond-funded project number seven is our playgrounds, to replace playground fall protection surfacing. Again, it's a basic standard, safety standard. That's, that concludes any bond project funding or CIP funding. We start with phase one, project number one, all abilities playgrounds. And this would be all-inclusive play areas that would provide children with disabilities an opportunity to play side-by-side with their siblings and their peers. And there's an opportunity through the Texas Parks and Wildlife Life Department grants to apply this.
And also, and also working with community partners, like MOMS on board.
And so the $2 million is what you're estimating would be the cost to have this, this for the three?
For the three parks, right, at different sizes. So Scott at the house, more space over an acre, we're proposing. And so that would be maybe, let's say, a million, 1.3 million or something, similar to one in Ron Rock. And then there would be a smaller one at Gaygo's, maybe at $500,000 or $400,000, and then there would be a smaller one at Raisin Jumper.
And now that MOMS on board have committed to raise some funding, so that this doesn't account for them being able to assist in covering some of these costs as?
Right, so we apply to the Texas Parks and Wildlife Department for $2 million. They will give us a million, and we come up with the other million. And MOMS on board have had this conversation with them, and they're willing to, to help fund, up with that million. San Feliz Park, location, and, which is out in Fabens. This is San Feliz Park inventory currently. It is in poor condition due to vandalism, illegal dumping, and shooting. So you can see the condition of those structures. We would like to, and it's partially in a flood zone, and the only access is through a private road. So there's a, and a great opportunity, and a unique opportunity for the county to be the, to own the first official off-highway vehicle trail park in the county. And there's only one, we would be one in like 11 or 12 in the state of Texas. And so they really are looking for someone to. And so they really are looking for someone to do off-highway vehicle trail parks. This is an exciting opportunity. I put the cost of six hundred thousand because off-highway vehicle trails park grant will give up to eighty percent, up to four hundred thousand, which is eighty percent, twenty percent match. And the twenty percent can't be in any kind to include that. Just one question.
On that particular park, how many acres do we have?
A hundred and fifty-five acres, I'm sure. So we would develop a new phases and we could apply for the grant every year. It's available every year.
I didn't realize it was that large.
Yes, it's very, so it's perfect. The, the terrain is perfect. There's a need in the community and it provides that additional opportunity for recreation.
And you say that cattle ends after you do ATV.
Yeah.
And I could also reveal some of the challenges you have in the Red Sands area as well, where we've got people out there and, and close to California State.
And I think also for large events, to be able to host large events, this would be a great site. There's enough parking, enough fair, yes.
Yeah, currently they host their own events out there. Their own events. So we, we, they were looking for the owner. I called and said, I'm the owner. And they're very happy to hear from us, from the county. So they're, they're very excited to hear from us. So phase one, number, project number three. This is at Escarate, some electrical system upgrade. And this is to help us in the future create more infrastructure like the sport feel like. So we want to have that as a core.
And, I'm sorry, does that include the baseball field, sir?
Yes, yes, absolutely. This, this, this is a, to support, to support those additional upgrades to the six fields, so. And then the next one is our, is our trail, which is in desperate need of resurfacing. And so we want to do that, it's, the trail is about a mile and a half. And we want to also connect some of those side ones that are just drop-off like.
So this was also part of the UTEP project. Remember the cornerstone projects from UTEP, so we're trying to incorporate those in as well.
Phase one, project number five, skate park replacement. So this will place the other skate parks that we have in the county.
Gallegos Parks and that.
Gallegos Park. Phase one, project number six, continue with the basics of the resurfacing the rest of our basketball courts.
For Escarate, one at Gallegos and one at Spark.
Phase number one, project number six, Escarate Park. So we would like to create a third ingress, egress lane. Again, this is on demand from the community and you all saw it on the, the Fourth of July.
Or any large event, any large event.
And electrical lighting, so that you can see on the right, we would like to light that up too when we do lights on the like and other special events. And then some type of decorative wall. Phase, number one, project number eight, to design some standard park signage for the county to identify our county parks and directional signs. When you go to the larger parks like Gallegos, Escarate, and San Feliz, so that people will know which way to go. Phase one, project number nine, the golf course event sign. So currently, previously you all had approved the demolition of the Escarate Golf Course Association building. We would like to build some type of concrete pad with a, with a shelter on it, a metal shelter, to provide improved the experience for the golfers. So right now, when they come in, they have to go into the, to the restaurant, pull up on the golf cart to get a drink or something. Now they can just pull up out there. They could serve them out there snacks, drinks, and then they can go on their way or go out. And provide some rental opportunities, special event space.
You know, it's such a beautiful area back there to begin with. And then having some kind of open air facility like that. I might consider getting remarried, don't tell my husband.
That's so beautiful.
Two of my husbands want it. Getting remarried to my husband.
And across the country, other golf courses have had, but.
Yeah, it's, they're beautiful, it's so beautiful back there.
It is, but this would be a rental space, yes. And so that concludes phase one of bond-funded projects and projects.
So just as I was mentioning, as far as the bond funds, we know we do not have one point two million already loose and available for allocation. We have a very small amount, probably about four hundred thousand that we could reallocate. But we would work in priority order. And then also work towards looking at, we have some bond funds in 2016 from that refunding that was dedicated for both, for, for a few specific things, including some stuff for parks. So if, if those, any of those existing projects come in under budget or aren't as much as we had set aside, we would then come back to the court and ask that the court consider, because they had limited other purposes they could be used for. And so we would ask that you all consider letting us, reallocating it towards this plan.
Yeah, I'm going to record as well. Second part, they split our presentation, it was a large presentation.
Why so hard on this question?
Phase two, years four through six, this is Spark's park location. This is the current inventory and use of, they have a playground, they have a basketball court, they have a skate park, and some open space with some picnic shelters. So I want you to look at that picture just a little longer and look at the south on Spark's side and how it's covered and the entrance is in the parking lot. So we would like to add to that one, the standard signage, sidewalk entrance from Spark. So it opens it up to the community. Currently, if you were to drive by, you may think that that is a private park for the daycare there. We would like to open it up and then create the county signage to be more inviting and then add a splash pad.
And we've already looked into the cost of operating splash pads and there, it's, it's much, it's actually much lower than I expected.
And, and that includes recycling that water?
It's the recirculating method, so it's similar to a swimming pool.
And I think this would be a great project, especially because this project, this area secluded from anything else. There's nothing around the area.
And it does, when you drive by, it does look like that park is part of that daycare right there. You know, especially because the part, the way everything sit back a little, it just, yeah.
And it's closed, it has a vinyl cover to the screening to protect the grass. And so you would think that it's, so I would like to open it up and maybe to the community. Phase two, project number two is Escarate Park. So this is, you can see what happens when it rains. So again, avoid runoff water into the lake and harvest water onto landscaping, create additional parking, nice parking in that, in that space. If you guys know, if you all notice, in front of the, the swimming pool, everybody tries to park even though it says no parking sign. Because that, that's the only place that they're staying.
And this was also part of the capstone project from UTEP.
Yes. Phase two, project number three is a sports park. So we would like to here extend irrigation and landscaping and some shade structures. And we would like to add a walking path to connect with the community so that the community will have an opportunity for improved quality of life through the park that is right there in their neighborhood. We'd like to connect that, the park with the community. At Escarate Park, we would like a, a dog park. Again, it's a regional park amenity. And we would provide, it would provide an off-leash area for dog owners. And hopefully encourage more dog owners to go walk and go play in the park with their dogs, so. And it would be a minimal cost. And then the phase two, project number five, the shade structures upgrade. So again, we would like to start setting some standards, design standards for our parks and provide rental opportunities. As you all recall, for the Fourth of July, we rented forty-one shelters out of the eighty-three that are at Escarate. I think next year they will all be rented.
And we, we didn't rent all of them because we just wanted to make it as fair as possible to be, so.
And so, and so, and when Veronica talks about renting all of them next year, we were, we were saying like, let there be some available. But I, as you went through the park, what you noticed was that people brought their own shade structures. So they don't have to depend on ours. And there's plenty of space for people to put up their own shade structures. So if you don't want to bring your own, you can rent ours. Otherwise, you bring your own, bring your own shade.
That, I think it's a good idea.
Well, there's benches where there is trees. So there is other open areas and rent areas. And, and it wasn't because I didn't want to rent anymore, that's what I personally thought. But at the end of the day, at six o'clock when we close, that's all that came in. We didn't turn anyone away. It was, had we stayed open till nine o'clock at night that night, we would have kept renting them because there was a line. When Commissioner Bill went to pay for his VIP at the golf course, that he saw the line of people waiting to, to pay up to two hundred dollars for a, for a, for a shelter.
And just a little note, in fact, when I went with my family, I couldn't even get into the park. We had to stop, the park stopped more vehicles from coming in.
We had the sheriff's office told us that we couldn't have them anymore.
And by the way, do we have revenue amounts from the?
Yes, there is nineteen thousand dollars in the report.
It was over nineteen thousand dollars in one day.
It's a very successful event.
Over eleven thousand.
Congratulations.
Great job, no, congra, thank you all for allowing the fireworks display.
You know, it was nice on the marketing side as well, because as you're driving, you know, on I can, you see the billboards, the signings, the changing ones. I think that helped a lot, helped, helped too much.
And so we'd like to, to thank the court because I think when we brought back some items that I've asked the court's support to allow us to keep some of those funds for our events or equipment, that's where the funding has come from. You know, we've been able to do more from that support.
Thank you. Phase two, project number six, Escarate Park. So again, we would like to increase paved accessible parking, create a new traffic route. So currently, we, with this would eliminate people going in through the main, on the other side, through the main.
And circle?
No, just around the, next to the lake. So we would only have one way to get there instead of two, so that it's safer and it creates, we can connect more of the walking trail and future improvements to the park. And Escarate, phase two, number seven, Escarate Park. So again, these are the, these are the concrete walkways that we would like to create around the fields. And it would include some landscape to include trees, shade structures, and a concession area for food trucks and an opportunity for additional programming. Right now, when the sports park has too many teams coming in, we're having to send them elsewhere because we do not have the lighting or the ability to provide that. So now our overspill will go to Escarate. Phase two, project number eight, Gallegos Park. So we would like to continue the progress in the, in the park and in the fields. So this would include the lighting for those fields and provide an opportunity for sports programming and rental opportunities. So we would start operating hopefully our own program. Phase two, project number nine, Escarate. We would put a water park at the southeast of the small lake. It would be a new attraction and we can expand the system over the years. So it currently, at Escarate Park, the only visibility to the park is either at the golf course or in this one corner, the south, the south end corner of the, of the southeast corner of the park. We would like to have something that lights up, that brings people, attracts people to the park. So once they come in there, they, they realize that they can go fishing, swimming, walking, golf, all the other.
And the southeast corner is by the border highway.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Some people would rarely be drawn.
Yes, where is that? How do I get in there? Phase two, project number ten, would be a garden. Again, this is a typical offering in an, in a parks and recreation agency. We would collaborate with Texas A&amp;M Agriculture Extension Program and have an event for, and conservation learning space, rental opportunities. And we definitely have an impact on the community. That concludes phase two projects. Phase three is years seven through ten. Phase three, years through, seven through ten, we're going to start with going back to the newer facilities that we have. And I think by then, we will have to do some replacing of, resurfacing of some.
Some of the work we've done.
Amenities, replacing the inventory, pave the parking lot so that it has a sidewalk and an entrance. And again, create a, build a splash park. Estrella Park, same thing. You saw those beautiful pictures of Estrella Park, so we would like to continue with that and add a splash pad to that. And again, these could be grouped together and we would apply for that outdoor to PWD grant, a million dollars. And we would do the same thing at Westway Park. So at Westway Park, we would also replace that playground at the splash pad and then replace any of the inventory that is there. Phase number three, project number four, Escarate. We would build an in-ground concrete walk plaza style skate park. Phase number three, project number five, Escarate Park. We would add a couple of spaces for RV parking and minimal amenities to include power connection and great water disposal. Phase number three, project number six, is the sports park. We would like to pick the parking lot, we would like to add a, a, a flat field in the funding area. Just make it a flat field so that the community now has another opportunity to recreate there, whether or not the park is open, because that's outside of the park. So again, providing something for that community. Horizon Hills Park, that is one of our newer parks. And so on that one, we would go back again and just replace anything that maybe needed trees, playgrounds, basketball resurfacing down the road. Phase number three, project number nine, Escarate Golf Course. Paint the car path all the way around and provide some lake and deck improvements. So again, with this, we hope that by then we've done a comprehensive study to determine how much golf we should be offering. And if there, and if the court decides to repurpose part of the, the golf course, there are many things that we can look into using that. But we would like to do a complete comprehensive study with the community involved so that it's something that the community wants.
Because one of the things we hear and, and we know is that there was something our, our golf course has that no other golf course has is a really well-set up, it's really well-set up to host first tee program, which is a very successful program. And so we would definitely want to keep that in mind as we look at this.
And then phase three, project number ten, is Escarate Park Monument. So have an interactive art design. And so nowadays, especially in parks and recreation agencies, we create art pieces that are also interactive with the community. So they light up, you can play on them, you can climb on them, you can do music, different things. Phase three, project number eleven, is the dream to have a scenic view, event space. To, with lights and power. And again, a lot of programming and event opportunities, like music on the lake, fiñeras, and weddings. That concludes phase three projects and estimated costs. And as we move into questions.
We will answer any questions that you might have. If not, we have some recommendations for the court, but any questions that we can address?
I think it's.
Go ahead, go ahead. Just, I, I know I've brought this up before. If, if you look at, you know, we've, we've often spoken about private-public relationships. And if you look at our pavilion, I think that would be, that is a gem as it is right now. It's been really upgraded. But if we go into partnership with a, like a five-year contract with like a Chick-fil-A, the Chick-fil-A pavilion, the, the, and we, we have the ability to contact some of these companies and see if they're interested in partnering up?
So we've worked on a policy for that. We've worked, and then we've worked with legal on what our limits are. We need to revisit it because, well, we came in very ambitious. Some of our, the initial legal feedback was more restricting than we had hoped. So we need to continue to press forward to try to get to that point. But I do know there were some legal issues that we would have to figure out a way to, and I know it can be done because other communities do it. And so we just need to continue to work on that policy to, to bring forward for commissioner sports consideration.
Yes, because we talked about naming the park after, like you mentioned, Chick-fil-A, naming the, the pool, right? Every year. Every year, like, or naming a tree or things like that. But I think we need to explore that some more and come back to the court with some recommendations from us and legal as far as what we can do on that.
Yeah, um, thank you very much. Very comprehensive and, and it's exciting. I've been excited about this since, since I got into office. I think we've been working on it for, for quite a long time and, and you know, so, um, thank you very much for, for all the work that you've done. I just had one question. There was one other, there was one other project that the, that the UTEP students had worked on, which I don't know if that's something that we're planning on funding just out of our regular operation budget, which is the floating gardens?
Actually, that's in the works. They just gave me a quote last week, Friday, and I submitted it to Parks and we're working on a requisition. We're going to do, they give us the, because they were still testing some of their plans in the biology building. And we met with Dr. Santiago, and so she gave me the exact plans to purchase. And so, we're working on that PO and we should have that within the next month or so. Yeah, we're working on that.
Okay, and I like seeing all the projects that they worked on, you know, incorporated, which I think will be, I think they'll be happy about that if we, you know, end up moving forward. Because, you know, the work that they did will, will, will have been for waste or in vain or.
No, no. We're continuing to work with them. Like I said, she came in with some of the students and we met with them. And she wants to come back and we're going to see about renewing the contract and working with other students on other projects. We still benefit.
And some of the things that, I don't know, I mean, we, you know, we, the department presented on a plan several years ago. And, you know, Norm and I have talked about this quite a bit over the last year or two, that there were things in the plan that were also things that should not be something we have to master plan for. You know, basic, when there's a hole in the walking trail, we need to be able to fix it. That's not, that's general everyday maintenance. We shouldn't be having to come and ask for special funding to take care of what we already have. You know, so we, we really are trying to focus on, and I mean, I, I use the hole in the walking trail, but that's true at all of our parks. We also, we missed it one place, but we're really trying to also quit looking at our parks as rural parks, or, you know, we're really trying to look at, this is our county park system. And all of them are part of that system. And that's, I really appreciate the focus that the, that the team put into looking at this holistically. And, you know, and continuing to monitor and even thinking forward of the parks that are becoming part of our system that we know, if we don't start paying attention to those, we are going to be back in the same boat with dilapidated parks that we're responsible for if we don't start planning for them now. Including Desert Acceptance, including Torneo, you know, really thinking of what our community needs are. So, this, I, I, I just, we, we really value your feedback, but I, I want to also stress, I really appreciate how, the approach the department took this time.
It's, I, I think it's great for you to talk about, you know, the holistic approach and I think something that would be really cool is, you know, in the future, also when we're, when we're planning, is like connectivity between the parks, looking at, you know, setting up trails, you know, so that, so we connect our, you know, all of the, all of the parts within our system. Because, you know, even, even though they may be rural right now, um, in, in ten, twenty years, well, I mean, Mike, Mike, Mike has a guy goes to awkward.
It may not be as hard to do. It, it sounds massive right now, but with the Paso del Norte Trail being worked on, it might be just connecting ours to that trail. And then that way, everything ends up being interconnected, um, over the long term.
That's a comment I had, is if, if we could take a look at that trail, because I know it starts, like, the playa drain portion starts at Escarate Park, this is really neat. And I think that there's that west side portion already built out, but over time, they've identified what the route would look like. And it is an opportunity for the county to designate us being one of the entities that takes over a portion of the parks. I know that our city partners, Rep Ordaz and Rep, uh, Ribera and, and others have used some of their, I think it's their CDVT funding, to, to help upgrade some of the, um, the trail areas that fall along their, their corridor. And so, the county might be interested in doing that in the future. So if we could include that maybe in this master plan moving forward, that would be ideal for us to be a partner in executing that bigger vision that could help provide some connectivity.
Yes, and I've had conversations with them and they ended at Isleta. Eventually, they're gonna end at Isleta High School, so that's where I think we would fit in from Isleta over to the Mission.
And that, the Mission Trail portion would be really neat.
And following up on that, just, um, our new subdivisions that we're getting, we're acquiring on the parties. We have been working with developers because now, you know, as part of our various process, they're required to give us a certain portion of land or dedicate to the county. So if we see the opportunity for any connectivity to trails and parks, on, I know on some parks, we've a portion of it will be a park and then a portion of that land is going to be a trail to provide connectivity. So we are, we do have that in mind and, you know, as far as the new development comes.
And something else on the hole that Betsy talked about, that a lot of times we have to come to the court. This year, we did request additional funds so that we don't have to come to the court for these minor things and that we can address them right away. We did make that request.
You got a little plug in for budget, huh?
Yeah, throughout, yeah.
Well, we appreciate it.
Commissioner Venice?
Um, just go ahead. Thanks for the presentation. I guess one, one thing I noticed, the swimming pools, are, those facilities are in really poor condition. Is that something that's being looked at as for, because I hate for those facilities to kind of remain the same for the next ten years without any upgrade. They're already very dated.
Yeah, right. So we've met, right now, we're waiting for a complete report from the ADA compliance manager or coordinator for the county. And we have taken her out. And we've got it back, the one from Escarate Pool, but we're waiting for the other two. And then, so we can create a comprehensive plan of how we can address that.
And so, if the court.
But not just for ADA, but for like, like, it's like the dressing rooms, like, um, ever, the, the entire, okay.
It sends your motivation to change, girl.
So we didn't put on the, like, roof or anything else. There was this basic core, so. Again, we want to stick with the core and then hopefully through the, the master, the comprehensive master park plan, we can, we can revisit this. This is not anything set in concrete, we can go back and revisit it and update it to address all those.
I guess to follow, and I, I'm glad that it was mentioned about, about the, I guess, the newer developments and is that something I guess will be looked at more closely, I guess, in the comprehensive plan? And the reason I just bring it up is, is that, I mean, the, the level of growth that we're experiencing as a county is, it's unprecedented. We've never seen it before. And the uniqueness about what's happening today is, is that these areas are forever going to be unincorporated. They're always going to be El Paso County, the, the days where the city annex are, are gone. And so, it's gonna fall on us to really provide high-quality parks to these neighborhoods. And, and that's, I know, that's often a determinant for quality of life surveys and things like that, is how, you know, how close are folks to a park? How accessible is a park? How large is a park? What kind of amenities does a park have? And I guess, you know, one of the concerns I've had over the long term is that, you know, in these neighborhoods, it's now where they're building the new fire station. I know in, in the upcoming presentation, we're looking at the possibility for the far east, east side annex. But, you know, before a lot of this land gets gobbled up, are we looking at areas that, that may need sort of a larger park to service residents because nobody else is gonna, the city of El Paso is not gonna look at it. Horizon City is also landlocked. They're, they're not looking for, for annexation right now, and then plus the legislature's made it more difficult to annex these areas. So I feel that the responsibility is gonna fall on us. Is that something that's being looked at as population trends are shifting?
And I think this is something that can be addressed with our comprehensive master park plan. Future, future growth and what we expect the community to do and what the county is expected to do. Because we'll have a lot of these pocket parks, but like you said, we have to address the larger parks and the need for the larger parks. And so, this is something we hope to get addressed through the comprehensive master.
In addition, I know in some of our internal meetings, there's been some land dedication. And that's something that we've thought about. There's a few acres that could be, that we could acquire as part of, is it land education?
Land donations?
Land donations. So if we feel that we could do something with that land, that we, we are trying to accept that. And one of the things that we look for, could it possibly be a park in the future?
Yeah, yeah, just as long as, I guess, as we, as we approach, I guess, our park, park planning that we, you know, I, I know that developers often, you know, they dedicate like maybe a couple acres or so for a small pocket park, but I think we've got to ask, is that, you know, really sufficient, I guess, for the amount of population that's going to be living in, in unincorporated territories?
And it's also more efficient if it's all, I mean, you know, versus having two acres here, two acres here, two acres here. It, you know, at some point, we need to look and say, efficiency-wise, if we put in a larger park in one, you know, area, it's much more efficient to maintain and you can add more services in one area, one place to run and, and provide utilities to, so.
Right. With a comprehensive master park plan, that'll look at that. That'll look at how many acres of parkland are we dedicating for residents? Which is standard in any park and recreation agency. So a typical agency will say nine point five acres for a thousand resident. Well, what are we offering and what does, what does Commissioner's Court want to approve to be that?
And we'll analyze the distance from a park, like, so from a particular, okay, I think that's.
Yes, so that'll be in the comprehensive master park, to study how many are county residents and how many are we serving for parking.
Thank you very much. And you have some action items?
Yes, we don't want you back today.
Yes, that will bring back an agenda item on regular session to request the court's approval on this regional park plan, also hopefully the use of some of the bond funds that are available for the projects that we've identified and then approved funding for the comprehensive master park plan, which is essential. This one's real important, not that the other ones aren't, all of them are just as important. But this is real important and if we want to proceed with aggressively seeking the grant funds, opportunities that are available to us. And so, we hope to bring back the first Commissioner's Court meeting on, in August for this.
All three?
These three items, yes.
As Betsy mentioned, we've got, our team meets quarterly on the capital progress, what's the status, what's requisition. So we pull, we pull in all the right players as far as the project's over, project oversight, the auditors for expenses that have been made to date and earnings on interest to date, and then we bring in purchasing to get what the bid process is, where are we at on requisitioning, so that we're going through every line of allocation to stay, to say, this is done. That extra sixteen thousand is there, let's push it out to available, so that when, when we come back to you, we can say very, very confidently, here's the sweep, here's what's available, here's the projects that we consider out of available funds.
How much will it take for a comprehensive park plan, master park plan?
For the plan to be completed?
It will take at least a, a year and a half. That's pretty impressive.
To really make sure we involve the community.
It'll involve, it'll involve meetings with you all, it'll involve future, our planning, future.
Public meetings.
Met, very, a lot of public meetings, a lot of surveying of different types, of different types.
And, and so, I guess, as it pertains, I, I guess, I mean, I don't, I mean, the phase one seems like a no-brainer, especially given its timeframe. So would it make sense then to wait on the later phases given until the, the completion of the master parks plan?
Well, we want to commit to this regional plan. When the comprehensive master park plan comes, it'll take over this one. But I have, it helps me to have a regional park plan for my grants through Texas Parks and Wildlife.
And it's, of course, each one of these projects would be subject to, um, funding and, we have absolutely, we don't even have enough funding right now for phase one. So we'd have to come back to the court every time for, for funding before we move forward. And it would be subject, we realize it'll be subject to change.
Absolutely, absolutely. So I think in concrete, I just want to have a starting point, um, so that I can apply October first for this.
But the, the further we get ahead and the more concrete plans we have, that would be good, good estimated physical impact. That's when we start aligning this with our building master plan, our parks master plan, we start laying it into what's our debt schedule look like, what's our capacity for debt, what is our, our, our future five, ten, fifteen years hold for us? So we start mapping in as we want to consider potential bond issuance, is how's that gonna impact, can we smooth that?
And the only other comment I have, I know we have to move on, but, um, is talking to groups that we work directly with, like the fishing club at Escarate and First Tee, and make sure that they feel like they're in the loop. The golf course association. So if they become excited at what the future looks like, but they also can provide feedback as to what they're seeing and experiencing.
Yes, absolutely.
And I'm getting a lot of comments about Escarate's tees, the greens, uh, great condition. And, and what's more important is not the condition of the park, but the personnel there at Escarate and the sports parks where I go more often. Uh, what a great team's out there because they are very people-oriented.
Yes.
Good job.
Yes, they go above and beyond. They're world-class. I'm very happy to be here. And the administration team has been amazingly supportive, so thank you all very much.
Thank you, thank you. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. I'm just gonna leak you something so you can think about it. Parks over there. These are pencil cup holders?
I don't know what happened to the.
Other pencil cup holders, yeah.
Of course, you can put a flower in them if you like.
These are, this is.
It's from a tree.
It looks like, it looks like.
Oh, is that where my mug?
I, I was waiting for you to, to lob with all the trees in it. I don't know.
I'm ready, I'm ready.
He's converted his.
Fight club.
Very rusty. This is now an ice cream mug.
Fight clubs.
Get that money with your lives.
This is my new, uh, this is my new Yeti.
Very creative, my hearts are red. Thank you so much.
From an ice sword or something useful.
Thank you.
There you go. Thank you.
And even hasn't felt bad.
I'll share, we can share pencil cups.
That is cool.
I know, you can pull it out, you can smell it.
Not until you pull it out of the bag, you cannot smell it.
No, well, you're smelling like Orson Welles, man.
Oh, I am, boy, it's, it's a little rough here.
It's smoky voice. Look at it, ladies.
Item number six, pursuant to the Texas Local Government Code, section 114.023, 114.024, 114.025, and 114.026. Please accept the attached presentation and the interim financial report through the month ended June 30th, 2018. The interim financial report is located on the intranet at http colon forward slash forward slash www.epcounty.com forward slash auditor forward slash publications forward slash monthlyreports dot htm.
My name is Jacqui, can you share? My name is Yvonne Garcia from the Financial Reporting Division. And today, I'll be presenting the unaudited income financial report for the month of June. This condensed financial report was published in the Sunday newspaper on July 22nd. Starting with, um, starting with revenues. This slide presents all revenue collected within the county broken down by fund type. During the month, the general fund collected approximately 10.1 million. This table shows general fund revenue in more detail, broken down by revenue source and compared to June of last year. For the most part, general fund revenue collections are following a similar trend to last year's collection. Major changes are in property tax revenue, which increased 4.4 million so far this year due to the positive impact of taxes, uh, due to new construction. And then, uh, sales and use tax revenues year-to-date have increased by 1.6 million attributable to increased consumer spending. Charges for services depicts an increase of 904,000, mainly due to the timing on federal prisoner feelings, which has increased by 1.2 million. And there, also part of the 904,000 is an increase in state legal service fees of 116,000. And then a decrease on the following fees, which are county clerk fees, district clerk fees, sheriff fees. And then a decrease on the following fees, which are county clerk fees, district clerk fees, sheriff fees and commissions.
Real quick on those fees, we met with the district clerk and the county clerk yesterday and they're seeing a very large increase in wavering of fees due to indigency. The district clerk reported to us just on family cases alone, it was a reduction of over four hundred thousand dollars in fees.
I could note, sales tax for the first time for the month of June, you have four million dollars, which means we have a little over eight hundred and twenty million dollars in sales for the month of June, highest ever before that time.
And also, interest revenues increased six hundred and thirty three thousand compared to last year. This is due to increased interest rates on invested funds. This slide shows the same revenue sources as the previous slide, but as a percentage of the estimated budget. As of June, we're seventy five percent through the fiscal year. So far this year, overall revenue collections total eighty nine percent of estimated general fund revenues. Current year, general fund revenue collections remain on a positive trend as shown in this table, which shows a three-year comparison of total estimated revenue focusing on the county's two most significant revenue sources, ad hoc and sales tax. And then to expenditures. This slide presents all expenditures within the county broken down by fund type. The general fund recorded total expenditures of twenty point six million and then year to date total of one hundred and eighty five point three million. This chart shows an increase in expenditures, eleven point four million during fiscal year twenty eighteen, or six point five five percent and also a monthly increase, a month to date increase of one hundred and sixty thousand when compared to last year. Expenditures year to date are further categorized as follows. Personnel salaries and benefits are at one hundred and forty five million and increased by four point four million compared to fiscal year twenty seventeen due to salary adjustments, which is cost of living adjustment steps, regrades, reclassifications and mean hires. And the one hundred and forty five point two million represents seventy eight percent of total expenditures compared to eighty percent, eighty point nine six percent in fiscal year twenty seventeen. Operating expenditures are at thirty five million, an increase of four point three million compared to fiscal year twenty seventeen. Changes are mainly due to an increase in contract services of two point six million, professional services of two hundred and sixty eight thousand and maintenance for one point two million. Capital outlays totals three hundred and sixty nine thousand, an increase by twenty three thousand over to fiscal year twenty seventeen, mainly due to equipment, equipment acquisitions. And transfers out increased by two point seven million compared to fiscal year twenty seventeen and was mainly due to the timing differences in the cash funding of match transfers compared to last year. This chart shows year to date expenditures per June in fiscal year twenty eighteen versus fiscal year twenty seventeen and they're both as a percentage of the budget. Expenditures are running slightly higher compared to last year at this time. Expenditures continue to run lower than the percentage of the year expired. And again, June is seventy five percent of fiscal year, so sixty one point five five percent of the budget is expended and thirty eight point four five of the budget is remaining. This chart breaks down the expenditures by function of government. Forty six percent of the expenditures really are related to public safety, twenty five percent to administration of justice, twenty four percent to general government and the remaining five percent to all other functions of government. Details on the expenditures will be presented in the following. The total general fund expenditures during the year are broken down by function as follows. So general government is at four forty four million, or forty eight percent of the of the budget. And administration of justice is at forty seven million expenditures, or sixty nine percent of the budget. Public safety is at eighty five million, or sixty nine percent of the budget. And other functions are at nine point one million, or fifty four percent of the budget. Fund balance protection. Revenues are projected here using a five-year average of five point two million or eleven point eight, I'm sorry, five point two percent or eleven point eight million. And the expenditures are projected at a five-year average of five percent. Our budget grew by fourteen million in fiscal year twenty eighteen. And that's, that would be five point eight three percent.
Overall, the fund balance, I mean, it appears to be stable, but we have a, you all put a five million dollar one-time expenditure that I'm working with budget policy with regards to the expenditure drawdown of those funds. So at this point, I'm projecting around seventy nine million dollars and that's what I've certified to the Texas collector as my, as of September thirtieth of this fiscal year. I have provided my estimates for for nineteen, as of the end of June, I'm going to go ahead and run them again once we close July. We're currently working on one major revenue, which is federal prisoners, and bringing up, possibly bringing up that estimate to six fifty. Because we have a, every year we have a major variance and the average for the last five years or so, it comes to a solid six, six fifty. But my concern is as to whether there's anything in the pipeline, as to whether those revenues go away. If if they do, I mean, my concern would be that, I mean, you have a lot of money budgeted in the in the budget, so it wouldn't necessarily be an emergency. In the event you made that decision, because it would be a reduction of expenditures and not necessarily a budget cutting initiative because revenues didn't come in as as we projected. Because that's, that's a, that's a big height for what we're trying to accomplish.
Commissioners, any questions on this update?
Just, on the one more community services line, it said showed zero expenditures for that period. I think it's. Right there, period actuals, it showed zero, did we not post any payroll or?
We'll go back and look, see what's coming under that category, yeah, because.
I'm sure what's in that category.
We spent two fifteen so far.
Right.
So if we could maybe check that.
Yes. I think we've found the the major ones, but I do have notes.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion to accept. Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dionne.
Aye.
Commissioner Stowe.
Aye.
Commissioner Haggard.
Aye.
Judge vote.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number seven, receive an update in preparations of fiscal year two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen annual passo, Texas budget discussions.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners, Molly Howard, real, now it's budget fiscal policy. Feels good, my first time giving a presentation this year.
Good to have you giving the presentation.
The overview, we're gonna, we're gonna go over the two thousand eighteen one-time allocations in this year's budget, the two thousand eighteen special funding that was allocated, our match accounts that we have budgeted both within GATN and GF and also our general match accounts. And I'm gonna finish off with the budget hearings overview. Originally, I was going to give you a tax overview, I'm gonna reserve that for August sixth. We just got our appraisal rolls in Tuesday morning at about nine nineteen in the morning. They're just finishing off calculating and verifying the rate. Of good note, I'll tell you, values went up by one point nine billion dollars, our strongest growth in ten years. So that will have a positive impact on the revenue stream and will impact the calculated tax rate. One-time allocations, Scotty Lake, we allocated thirty five thousand dollars, that was a reallocation to purchase the algae boat along with appropriations we already had, the boat has been purchased, the boat is operational. I kayaked on the lake a couple weeks ago and went fishing and you can see absolutely where the boat has gone through the lake and removed that algae. It's really great. People at the lake gave me a lot of feedback on how they're liking the positive impact it's having and and also on the fish population. County attorneys, we allocated twenty four thousand dollars for heat software. We did not use these funds if this project was done in-house. We also allocated fifteen thousand dollars for time management software, we did not use those funds, that was completed in-house by staff as well. On the emergency management reallocation, we had done in general administrative, we allocated a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, closed that out and paid one hundred and four thousand, eight hundred and sixty four dollars, we were clear on that. I T D, we've allocated a hundred and sixty nine thousand, four hundred for the I T D plan, master plan reallocation, that's uh, that's ongoing right now. We'll carry the next year. Fitness Center, we allocated five hundred and thirty one thousand dollars for items that would not be covered by the original pool. That transfer has already been processed, it's now a capital project. And they're in the bidding process and the spec process. The reclassification, we've allocated a little five hundred thousand dollars for reclassification, catch-up funding, cover everything and get us current for the seven-year plan and that has been accomplished this year. So your one-time allocations in FY eighteen this year for one, we look at one point four million dollars. Within special revenue, we also had a one-time allocation for double paging season, we added four point seven million dollars for paging and they are well in their paging season. Expenditures are running where they should be as well as the encumbrances and the contracts on the paging materials. So we will be successful in a double season. Special funding that was allocated during the current fiscal year, budget and fiscal policy, we allocated fifty thousand dollars for performance measure consultant to assist us with developing those with our departments. Our first response came back in beyond one, a little over two hundred thousand dollars, we're currently reworking that RFP now. Budget and fiscal policy, investment advisory services, fifty thousand dollars was allocated, the RFP is done, it's advertised and biz will open up August sixteenth, and questions are due from vendors on August second. So our goal is to do a quick review of those, make a selection and negotiate a contract and try and bring that to a close this fiscal year and we have a new investment advisory service for FY nineteen. Chief Administrator, we allocated sixty thousand dollars for internal control checks and balance system. She's been working very closely with Mr. Dionne from the doctor's office. RFP is drafted and additional language has been incorporated from the.
No, we're waiting, we're still working on additional language.
Yeah, even if they're just working with me on that, we're hoping to have a team within a few days.
Great. Community services outsourcing cremations. Right now, we have an additional hundred fifty thousand dollars as a starting budget. We use seventy four, sorry, seventy four thousand, three hundred and eighty-two. We have no responsive bids, that's being reposted right now, we'll back out for bids. CJC robo calls six thousand, the contract was effective two weeks ago. GPS monitoring to CJC or our criminal justice, criminal justice coordinator office, sixty thousand dollars during contract negotiations.
But that's only for a pilot project, so we're doing a pilot project with the courts on that GPS monitoring. And then we would, and we did that because it's under the fifty thousand to do the one court pilot project. We would come back and, so that funding needs to be sure to be carried.
Re-appropriated.
Because once we get the pilot program and we get policies and rules set up, then we would go out for bid to do a more comprehensive. And we'd also want to do some studying on the impact to jail populations.
And the robo calling is for?
So that's just specifically, we're going to be monitoring that, it's to call individuals who are out on any kind of bond or on PR bond to remind them and it's, we believe it will increase compliance and reduce failure to appear and reduce recalls of bonds.
Thank you.
Last on CJC, ninety five thousand was allocated for test kits, they're looking at outsourcing that now. Economic development, we allocated a hundred thousand for customized trainings, we've used twenty five, two hundred fifty thousand was for our impact fund, we've used twenty five to date. On the mission trail chain link fence removal, fifty thousand, we have two pending allocate, applications. Under human resources, we allocated ninety thousand promotional exams, they're in contract negotiations now. We allocated fifty five thousand dollars for shift differential, we used just under forty one thousand, the dates were right on track with three months left to go. And then we had fifty thousand dollars for outsourcing our antigrass investigations, we've got nine active cases being investigated currently and so.
That one we know that for. Yeah, we know that we're going to be coming, it's been, it's worked really well, but it's, we're still continuing to see an uptick in those particular kinds of incidents. And so we believe that we're going to need some additional funding this next year.
Additional special funding under public works, we had allocated up to a hundred thousand dollars for overtime needs. So far, only one weather-related overtime need, a little over a thousand dollars for our snow event in the winter. I have not had any overtime for flood.
The majority of it'll be for flood.
That's typically what we've expected. Under Scotty operations, we had added thirty three thousand for six fish drops. Unfortunately, there is a vendor, the price did increase, but we'll be able to do four fish drops with that, which is still twice as many to have done in prior years. Parks events, capital investment, we allocated five percent of new revenue, that additional money, that was used to purchase the algae boat. A park, a public works under the county fair, hosting a fifteen thousand dollars, partnered with the county livestock show and discussions for FY eighteen are currently underway. Lastly, on this one tax office, we allocated thirty three hundred dollars for eight remote capture devices, one is in and installed. The others are online for overview of our match accounts. So within general administrative, we allocated just over three quarters of a million dollars for match. They're listed out there for our routine airport maintenance, castle and K O, text on transportation, mouth fifty, van pool, new applications and any contingencies for grants that were unanticipated, new grants we are applying for. So that's just a little update for you as to where we're at. The next two slides are just the match accounts that we already have programmed normally in our in our budgets and it's just what the revised budgets are today, where those match accounts are allocated and the current level of spending, year-to-date actuals, so.
And the, but the veterans assistance one, didn't they, they received the funding, so we didn't have to use it? Or we, or that's one where we absolutely have to provide that match?
I think this is one where we need a match.
Okay.
I'll double check. So we've got a revised budget right now, just over, under two and a half million dollars. Year-to-date actual match that has been transferred from the various accounts into those grants is right under six hundred thousand dollars. But they get transferred in quarterly, there's a couple of large single transfers that will bump that number up on year-to-date. Number of dollar value of active grants that we have right now is just under twenty five million dollars. Now I'm going to lead you into FY nineteen, give you a little preview and synopsis on where we're heading for hearings that start on August sixth. So as mentioned, August sixth through tenth are week one of hearings. On the sixth, we'll meet after commissioners' court from three to five. We'll review our, we'll give you a budget hearing overview, we'll go with the calendar, we will do an overall budget review. We'll do a revenue review with Mr. Dionne. I'll provide you with that tax rate comparison by then, during that same day, our tax assessor is planning on presenting you with the tax rate officially in commissioners' court on the sixth. And we'll also have an item on the agenda for the court to consider proposing the tax rate. Your financial policies state that we will propose the goldback rate post-public hearings and we'll ultimately adopt the rate that we choose to balance the budget at, going through that course of hearings and meetings that we'll have during the month of August. And then we'll, I'll go give you an overview of the budget register, just where we stand, where the revenue estimates are, the fund balance, the budget that's that's being provided to you, maybe the impact as to where we are on the projected ending fund balance for FY nineteen. On the seventh, every, every day, the seventh, all the way through the fifteenth, every day, we'll start with a recap from the prior day. But on the seventh, we'll do the administrative account. But on the 7th, we'll do the administrative accountability, compliance overview. Departments this year, we asked them to give us a little summary, telling a story about their departments, what their accomplishments, what their goals have been, what some of their outcomes and efficiencies are, or what some of them are pure output numbers. So we had a pretty decent response from departments. So departments will be coming in and giving you just a brief five-minute overview. Now, if their department has budget changes that are over our determined threshold, 5,000 or 4%, they will state, they will state for their portion of the hearing. We'll specifically go over what their budget changes are that meet that criteria. Additionally, as Ms. Keller has been meets with you on a weekly basis, departments have viewed expressed that you'd like to have come before us in budget hearings. Even if they did or didn't meet those criterias, we've scheduled those as well. So all day on the 7th, we'll be going over those department presentations. That will include their budget, they'll tell their story, and we'll give you a overall fund-wide perspective on what they spend on personnel operating and capital. Toward the end of the day, we'll close out with judicial management matrix. We'll review our other funds and then we'll recap the budget register. I'll keep a running budget register for the day. But at the end of the day, any actions that we take, we'll know what the impact is on a daily basis with register. 8th, we'll start with recap. And then we'll go over our capital project status and overview. You'll receive recommendations from the CIP. We'll go into detail with the general administrative account and our match accounts. We'll do litigation overview and executive session and analysis on what we've paid for outside counsel versus internal and settlement cost. And we'll close the day out as we do every day with a budget register. On the 9th, we'll do, we'll start the day with a recap, go through strategic plan, budget overview, what the impacts are for things that you're considering in strategic plan. You'll do your chief administrator evaluation.
Which I'm gonna send you all the materials for that, similar to the way we did it last year.
Then we will do policy updates. So we've got some, you received an email from Ms. Vettel in my office on financial policy recommended updates. Not too many, but it's a redline version, we'll discuss that.
And HR have three.
And HR will have some policies as well. We'll do economic development discussion and close out with a budget register. Last day of the first week of hearings. We'll do our recap from the prior day. We'll do the personnel overview, go into the recommended positions that, for regrades, new positions. We'll also review the prior two years personnel that have been granted. Go through an FY19 personnel review and then go over the related fringe benefits for the county retirement, health, parking, impacts for step and cola, the elected official salary because you'll need to consider if you're gonna propose a salary, that publication will follow the following week. We'll send a notice out to elected officials on when you propose for salary. You've got their five-day feeding period and schedule a grievance hearing if anyone does grieve the proposal. We'll close that day out with a tax discussion and then we'll do a budget register recap. Week two only has two days scheduled right now, which will be Tuesday and Wednesday. We'll recap Friday, or the week before. We'll then do outside agency funding, we'll go over our ESDs. I've heard already from ESD 2, they're not scheduled to take action on their budget until that evening. So I'm probably gonna have to push ESD 2 to the following Monday, close out their budget discussion live on that Monday. But as I receive that budget from the emergency service district, I'll shoot that to the court. I'm attending ESD 1's meeting tonight, they're having a budget meeting for a budget workshop. And then they have an action item next week at their scheduled meeting to take action on their budget. So we will all, we'll go with the crank uppers, ambulance. JPD is on week two, only would have them in week one with all of the county departments, but they have a schedule conflict and then they're out of town on the first week, so they'll be here on the second.
Yes, sir. Can I interrupt there? As far as the ambulance service, this is something that I've been talking to you about for some time. How are we in our talks with Horizon and support?
So both, we've met with both, we've made them aware of the change that after the end of this contract, our current contract, that they would be responsible for picking it up for their communities. There has been some resistance from at least one of the communities, but we're continuing to work with them and encourage them that they will need to plan for this expense. Also, we've encouraged them that we'd like to continue to do it through one provider, just in their local agreement, that they'll pay for their share of it, or that they have the right to go out and buy it directly themselves. I do understand that one of them, I think it was Horizon, was looking at if they went out to do it themselves and could have some more controls over the contract and the ambulance provider. But we're still working through that.
Because that makes a difference of about, per quarter, about $45,000?
For the year, for the two entities, close to $70,000.
There wasn't unusually, I know this year, this last quarter, one entity this last quarter was like $30,000. So it was a very high quarter.
And then our projected last day of hearings on the 15th, we'll recap. And it says start decision-making, I'm hoping it really means conclude decision-making. And that as we're going through hearings throughout, I would encourage the court that if we are ready to make decisions on the prior six days, make them at that time as well. But I'd like to close out decision-making on that day, a little budget register recap. What I didn't mention is, the night of the 14th right now is our first scheduled tax hearing, or the second scheduled hearing being the evening of the 17th. If all the publications work, right on date. Because we would, you would propose a rate on the 6th, I would publish that rate on the 7th. And then as soon as we can have our first hearing is seven days after the first publication, which would be the 14th. But the way it works out, we could actually have the second hearing on the 17th of that week and conclude both hearings, so we can have one no sooner than three days.
And these are also subject to, if one day we get, we run long, we may bump some things to the next day. If one day presentations go quicker than we expect, we may pull something up that we're ready to move on, just to make efficient use of the time.
But as it's planned, we're slated to adopt the budget and the tax rate by August 23rd, similar to the way we did last year.
Something that I didn't, are you finished, Wally?
Yes, sir. I guess you could tell.
Something I didn't see, maybe it's under another category. The certification pay that we discussed for constables.
That's actually one of the policy updates. When I said they're free from HR, that's the very first one, looks there.
That'll fall on August 9th. Any other questions?
Any questions?
Thank you, Wally. Thank you, Mr. President. Item number eight, discuss and give direction on the 2012 bond funding allocation projects.
Good afternoon, Judge Commissioners, Betsy Keller, county administrator. So Wally is pulling up the backup for this item.
Amy Gell in the room. I'm gonna make one call.
What's the reply? It's just the same?
No, that was mine right now.
Can you go to the website and pull that?
Yeah, it's online. Public meetings?
Down, down. So previously, Victor and our team came forward and talked about the 2012 bond and how much fund, how many funds, what funds remain from previous projects that were either unable to be completed because there wasn't enough funding, or something changed in the course of work that changed the project, or that projects came in under what they're originally allocated for. And when we go through, and we, thank you. When we went through, there was $110 million originally in this bond. And of that, there's approximately $18 million that still remains unallocated that can be used for specific purposes that follow the bond order. And so the 2012 bond order allows the county, the funds to be used for the projects listed here. Port of entry was a major one, jail annex was a major one. This also included funding for county annexes. And the bond order is broad enough to allow annexes in various areas. It originally included vehicles, but we've refrained from using long-term debt to buy vehicles to be more prudent. Roofs, courthouse repairs, P-25, some other projects. Here I put $18.9 million for reallocation. After we went back through to do the sweep after our last meeting, there were a couple projects that did have a couple bills still come in. So it's a little bit less than $18.99 million now. Victor, do you remember the exact number?
Yes, $18,975. So it's just under $24,000 in bills that we had to pay after the court's order from May 20th.
Perfect. So these are the specific types of things that can be used on. We cannot, for example, this is one where there was nothing in the bond order about parks. So we can't take funding. The only thing that was in there was a park roof, a couple roofs, I think. But we can't take funding from this to build a new park or do park playground equipment. So in looking at what the uses of this bond are, there is also some additional things that we need to be aware of. So this bond was tax exempt, so that does make us have to be very conscientious about what it's used for. We cannot sell the bond-financed property to private use before the bond is paid off. And we cannot have more than 10% use over the life of the debt for privately operated or federal government purposes. Also, we need to complete the projects and expend funds in a reasonable timeframe, and we need to make sure it meets the uses outlined in the bond order. So based on our previous discussions, I've compiled some of the potential projects and would like just to provide this opportunity for the court to give discussion, thoughts about prioritization, any other particular areas that you would like to concede if we've missed anything. So potential project was downtown space and parking. So we've talked a lot about this. You know, right now, there's a demand, we have a waitlist for our garage, we have a waitlist actually now to get into the parking lot across from the MDR building. So we know we have parking needs in the downtown. We also have some space needs. Real quick, back on the parking demands, I made a note here that it would have to be operated in-house, we couldn't contract it out because again of the tax exempt status. And similar to the way we operate our current garage, we do it in-house. Space needs, we do know that there are some long-term space needs for downtown. We have, right now, we're struggling with where we're housing probate court one. The current court is too small. The council of judges has talked about moving that court up to the ceremonial courtroom, which is where one of the county court that's on law operate out of now, and they have to move the county court at law down to another floor. In any case, the courtroom that probate court one would move out of is an extremely small, the smallest courtroom in the county. And so we would have to address that. The other issue is, there is not, there aren't courtrooms large enough for very large trials. So the only very, very large courtroom we have is the ceremonial courtroom. We also use that for jury selection, and that's been an issue as well. So we have some space needs. We're out of space for the public defender. The public defender has attorneys having to be multiple people in one office. And there's just really, unless we mess with the aesthetics of this building, there's really no space to start addressing those needs. We've looked at moving out some departments, but you get such small gains. For example, we've talked about elections, we've talked about economic development, and those are tiny compared to the space demands and the long-term needs. And then also, this bond would allow for FFNE and for remodeling in any spaces that are vacated by moving out to another building. There are a few options that we've looked at to acquire space in the downtown region. We've looked at buying an already existing building. The building that we've previously discussed, the one concern with that is it doesn't provide parking immediately available. And it's, you know, the concept of asking the public to park here at our location and then to travel to another building to see, for example, the public defender's office is a concern. The other option we have here that we could talk about further is acquiring lots or space downtown and constructing from scratch a partial garage, partial office building. So maybe three or four levels of garage and three or four, and then three or four levels of office space. So that would be an option. But that's one of the potential projects. Another one I've been looking at and we've heard a lot of comments on is Wi-Fi for jail annex and detention facility. This is an important project. We do need Wi-Fi in the jail annex and the detention throughout the entire facility. And the reason why we need this is both for legal services and for jails' medical. So if you've ever toured one of the other jails that provide medical in an efficient manner, they always have individuals with medical carts out on the floors. And there's the computer right there that they type into, this inmate received this medicine. This is, you know, and be able to pull up and look at like, okay, this person's been released, I don't need to administer any treatment or medication here. We don't have that capability because we don't have Wi-Fi throughout our facilities. We don't have that connectivity. Now, I will tell you, when we look through prioritization, this is a project that may come to be needed, but the sheriff has been looking at another method of getting the service. This is if we make the upgrades ourselves internally. And when I say ourselves, we would contract to make the, to run the cabling, to do everything necessary to put Wi-Fi on every floor of the jail. And then there would be an additional operating, annual operating cost to have this. The sheriff is looking at if we went just and outsourced, purchased the product, it would be a little bit higher per year operating, but we would not have this capital cost to put the system into our jail ourselves. So we're still evaluating that, and we don't have a clear answer unfortunately yet. The other potential projects that are of high importance are courthouse maintenance. This building is in need of replacing the control valves, dampers, and controllers for our heating and cooling systems. And this, that's a $1.3 million project. It's been requested through the CIP penny fund, but obviously the CIP penny fund is not sufficient to pay this expense. And that, this is something that facilities is continuing to remind us is a need that we will at some time not be able to, it will become an emergency purchase if we don't address it eventually. Courthouse security through Senate Bill 42. Senate Bill 42, the committee was formed, there's been a survey of this building. My estimate here is actually probably a little bit high, but the cost that I believe we originally were given, it was done through Department of Homeland Security, and I don't know that we've looked at, we haven't taken that same information and ran it through based on recent purchases and the market here, what the actual cost would be. But this is for things like a camera system, ballistic walls and windows, and access controls to secure the courthouse.
Now, the study that was done was just for the judiciary, though?
Correct.
So I don't know that it takes into account any other security needs that we might need throughout the entire program.
Right, and so there's definitely some cushion here for additional costs and things of that nature. And then also this afternoon, I'll talk to you all some more about courthouse and county security from an operational perspective, based on issues you all brought up. But this is the actual capital section of that. Let's see, we also have discussed multiple times election technology. We know that election technology upgrades are needed. This would run approximately $6.6 million. We do believe we'd be able to get grants to cover about 10% of this cost, maybe a little bit less, about $600,000. But there's already the HAVA grant funding available for a portion of this. But this would be the hardware and the software. We've talked before about the concern about federal, like if the federal government came out with more HAVA money, or if we had already purchased and then they came out with this HAVA money. When I was at NACO, one of the specific policy discussions that was voted on and that will be part of the and that will be part of their lobbying efforts is to be sure to put in to continue, everybody again discussed the need for HAVA funds. Everybody discussed that there's just a tenth, a tenth of the funding available that was originally given to, to replace all machines. And that if the funding was given, to be sure to write into your legislative agendas that it be also cover reimbursing any retroactive purchases in the last year or two. So that is something that NACO adopted the amendment into their policy, and something we, we need to make sure, I think Judge, you and I have already talked about that. We need to make sure that's part of our legislative agenda. But this is more basic, based on the federal level, level of HAVA funding. This is something that we know we're gonna need. We did, I did talk to Lisa about the lease type of, going the lease option. She said it's gonna cost the same amount, just whether it's over, done where we own it or whether we lease it with an option to buy. And this is just whether we put it into our operating budget or whether as a, as a lease payment or we put it into our budget as a debt payment, which is already actually there if we use this funding for that. Also allowed under the bond proxy or bond order is a Far East Annex. This is obviously one of the fastest-growing areas. This afternoon, I have a map I'll be providing that shows the density of growth, of the density of the population in El Paso. And Far East is by far the most population dense. We also have Justice of the Peace Base needs, particularly JP six dash two. We've talked about looking at how our JPs, and we're working on a report to bring the court on looking at how our JPs are dispersed. But we do know that regardless, that this is an intense area with demand for services. And a possibility to consolidate some of our facilities where people, you can see there, there's one of our portable offices there in the lower left-hand corner. And we also have our onsite subject crew working out of a similar facility out there that we'd be able to consolidate and maybe add some other services in that area to better serve our residents. We estimate that to be at four million, and that's probably, we've looked at our other annexes, and they ran at the highest, I think, just over three million. So, and that's been a couple of years ago. So that's where we're coming up with that. So there are some other studies that are pending. There is the Downtown Jail Study that's currently pending, and I'm sure there will be recommendations out of that. But we haven't even awarded that study at this point.
It's open today, so you know.
So I think that that would be, bids are due today, aren't they?
Yeah, the bids are, the bids are due today.
They're not opening yet, well, we're not studying them yet. But the, I think by the time that that study is completed and when the use of these funds, and I don't even know that the, there were, I don't know what the study will, will recommend. By the time the study is actually completed, and then the cost of that, I don't know timing this wise, whether it'd be prudent to continue to hold funds out of this bond to address whatever that study shows. Also, the ITB Master Plan, that's in the underway. There will be recommendations that come out of that, but that's still another year out. So that's, those are other, some, some other priorities that are pending. Then, the pros of those, of course, is they both do, would qualify for use of this, this particular bond proxy. But again, I don't know the cost, and it's a timing issue as well. So we just wanted to open it up for the court to give us some feedback and give us any input on this.
And I think the court maintenance piece is really important. We have to keep this building up to snuff so that it continues to function in our favor. And I know that one point three million, I mean, the space is clearly in need to add eight million. Does the eight million that you have in there include the potential cost of the building that you mentioned and parking, and parking? Like maybe creating a parking garage in the MDR parking lot or?
So at this point, what I, basically, this covers for sure an acquisition of an already built building that we've discussed. But I don't know that it would cover, we didn't look at that. Melina is working on looking at the different lots that are available downtown and looking at what, what it would take to do something on those lots, including the MDR lot. So she's working on giving us her options. It's just whether or not we want to identify to reserve some of these funds for that.
And then courthouse security, I mean, that is something we do have to take a look at. I don't recall if the legislature set aside money though to help offset the cost for any. So that's something we'd have to then find.
We've made it through legislative league and governor's league of the last. And it's several sessions until court on security increase.
That was a, that was a revenue increase, right?
Yeah.
Then the elections technology, I mean, we're hearing all the news about, and I know it sounds so kooky and crazy maybe to talk about Russian hacking, but I mean, we're, we're already hearing that there were attempts for the midterm elections that are coming up to already infiltrate some of the election systems. You know, I think that's gonna be a, a big consideration for us. I do agree with the concern that we paid for this and then there's this swath of money that's unleashed for communities across the country to pay for it. It'd be ideal if there was that safeguard that we get reimbursed. I put it in our state legislative agenda, which the money would flow to the state, but I don't know how much pool the state would have in terms of the federal allocation. So, I mean, those are my top four. I mean, I think the east side annex is obviously, it's really important, but I'm not sure that we have enough funding with some of those other areas to, to do that yet. That's just kind of my perspective. But we, there's a clear need for the east side annex. The growth, like Commissioner Betts mentioned is incredible, and our JPs are in not the best conditions probably, and so.
I, I think, you know, it's, it's a unique opportunity to regard the downtown space. I mean, it's, a lot of these, a lot of our employees are really cramped, and it's, it's getting to a situation that's, we're gonna run out of options pretty soon. And, you know, this, I think the bond was designed to, for, for large infrastructure projects. And, and I think that, you know, looking at a downtown facility should probably be, at least, at least the acquisition of land certainly. I think maybe to look at that. And probably plan, yeah, I would say a parking garage and, and a facility.
On a side note on that, and also piggybacking on Commissioner or Judge votes, is also if we had a garage that had some revenue, because there would be some public parking, that could also help pay for some of the cost of the building itself.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's gonna have to. I mean, I don't think, e- even if, even if we reuse all the eighteen whatever million, I don't think that's gonna be enough to construct, I think, both the facility and a downtown garage. I could be wrong, but I think at the very least, we need to start exploring the, the acquisition of land and the least potential planning for a facility regarding whatever the size it's gonna be. And then I think, you know, with the election equipment, I mean, I don't, I don't like that, but it, it just seems that we're gonna have to pull, we're gonna have, we don't really have much of a choice. But I would, I would wait, you know, I would at least reserve funding and probably wait until we absolutely have to buy that, until all other options have, have been exhausted. But it seems to me like that's, that the equipment has already reached its shelf life, hasn't it? I mean, this is gonna be the last election.
I know that the, that, I know Lisa has talked about the interest in replacing it before the twenty twenty, the November twenty twenty election, and she's looked at the, I believe that's, and then she's looked at time back, like how long in advance of the order of machines. And so I know timing is critical.
And, I mean, I would suggest we just at least reserve funding for that so that way we don't have to have a tax increase or something like that when it comes to time to purchase the equipment, if we have to. And then, you know, I mean, then the Far East Annex, I think we should at least look at some funding for acquisition of land. That's kind of my only concern when it comes to any sort, whether it be parks or development is, is the rapid growth of development. I don't want all this land to be gobbled up and then us to only decide later that we'll need. Something it might be advantageous to see if we can either enter, into a partnership with somebody or see whatever land is available at the very least. But, you know, the JP facility that's out of Mobile Home has been an issue for a long time. And I know that we are considering, you know, looking at the JPs after the twenty twenty census, but I think at the very least, it'll be prudent to enter into, at least the land acquisition for fiscal year nineteen.
I, I, I agree, I think that we need to prioritize the, the space in fighting downtown. I think every time I think that the department has one of the biggest issues is that, you know, there's less and less space. And because we continue to grow, and so I definitely think that's, for me, the top priority. Whether we purchase a, an existing building near the, the parking structure or something like that, or, or, I think that's the, the top priority for me. I think that, you know, maintenance, the courthouse maintenance should also be a priority. And across the, the election machines. I think that, um, that would probably be top priority.
Commissioner Leon, I'm on you.
Just a quick question. By creating the voting centers, is that a money saver or is that more expensive?
I know that voting centers will absolutely require the new technology. So, we can't even really go to the vote centers until we get the new equipment.
But from an operational, conducting of the vote in theory, that's the, because we need to gain some efficiency.
And, and you, and you hope it encourages more turnout? Makes it more convenient for people to vote anywhere, anytime?
Our voting is very inefficient. You can stand in one spot and see three different voting sites that have to be stacked. That's pretty broken. Twitter, are you done or I don't, I don't wanna cut you off?
Oh, good.
Um, I, I, courthouse security, I think it's like locks. I think it just keeps on us being honest. We can have as many ballistic windows as we want, but if someone wants to shoot me, they can just wait for me to walk to my car. So I mean, I, it, it doesn't do much for me personally, and I know I may be alone, but that's great until you leave the building and then I can shoot you on the, on the sidewalk. So I don't think that's our biggest need. I agree, downtown space and downtown parking are huge. The East Annex, I agree, is huge, but we've got to figure out where, where it's gonna be at. Commissioner President made a good point in the past that where it is may not be the best location for it, so we just gotta make sure if we buy land, this land is accessible. I agree with elections, but my, my biggest fear is that maybe we say, okay, so the elections, we're gonna call this as good news, we're gonna grant for you, we're gonna grant for elections. And it's just, it's just one of those things that you're kinda, you're, we're stuck in a hard place.
And I think, and I think with the, with the Far, the Far East Annex as well, I mean, just kind of elaborating on, on Commissioner Betts, you know, we might want to hold off on, on that because, you know, until after the census, because we can, we can look at. Well, I, I guess we don't even have to hold off until after the census because, and I, at least, you know, I have, I have an interest in looking at the JPs and, and maybe consolidating some of those, some of the JP districts.
And I know that to do that, it's my understanding that actually not waiting for the census is a better time to do it. And so, you know, not waiting for a, a redistricting time is a better way to do it. And we're, we're actually compiling some information to see, to bring to the court because at the same time, we're also trying to be conscientious of, like efficiencies and caseloads and things of that nature. So we're, we're compiling, we, we have a couple teams, both in Wally's office and CJC, or, or, not CJC, our data analyst compiling information and data so we can bring to you all, so you can discuss that further.
So Commissioner, how do you view yours on space? Just trying to get like those space, the elections, and the east side annex?
Further.
I, I think that for, for me, it's the overriding one is the space. And when it, when it comes to maintenance, I mean, I do think maintenance is important, but I really think it needs to be part of the CIP because, you know, our, maintaining this building, you know, shouldn't be dependent on, 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 you know, the bond funds that come maybe whatever once a decade or so. And so I know it's a, it's a large expense for CIP, but it's important for all our facilities that, that those be part of, sort of a main, regular maintenance plan.
And we really probably, and I know Wally's working on a long-term debt plan, but we really need to also work on that, that capital plan because realistically, if we could bring you all a plan that shows we're gonna need one point three million every so many years for valves, dampers, controllers. We're gonna need X million for roofs, we're gonna need, you know, this much because it may help the court identify what, what portion of our revenue should be going towards capital because it's gonna be greater than the one penny, I think.
Do, do we have a policy that what, what would be for, for like a CIP, acceptable for a CIP and what would be for a bond? I mean, really, I think something that's like more than like three billion or probably more than a half a million.
Yeah, right now, it's half a million is the threshold. Every half a million, it goes to the bond.
Because, I mean, right now, I mean, it's, it's increased obviously with the increase in taxable properties, but with new valuation. But right now, this year, we're expecting to generate approximately four million with the penny. And we, we started this year, you'll see during budget, I think we started this year with over sixty-three million dollars worth of penny request. So, and realistically, not all sixty-three million, some of them are wish list, but there are things that we are, that we basically have to say, okay, this is gonna have to be second tier if we get another chance to look back through, but they're all great needs.
And on the courthouse maintenance, I mean, it would be helpful to, to get a sense of like the, the life of some of these items and to get replaced. And if something is like, next year, it could go down and we are living in heat because the cooler's not working, then maybe that's a thing we can prioritize maybe through the bond, and then the others could be put in the CIP.
Why was that your?
And I, I thought it was funny, I did this presentation and then that happened. I was like, are they trying to prove a point? But no, they're not. It was really the electrical demand.
And one final question?
Yes, sir.
I know we've spoken about this many years, the entrance to the courthouse.
That's being done this year. We're working on that right now, the, the courthouse entrance. There, it's part of the design, I've showed the court, so that's already programmed.
So, Betsy, does that give you some good perspective?
That gives me some great perspective, I really appreciate it.
So what are your thoughts on bringing this back to the court for, I mean, you're gonna try to start to get some more concrete numbers. I guess we have to get a presentation like on space and?
What we're going to do is, so right now, Public Works is working on this, like space options and looking at like from an efficiency and a building perspective, where would it be least, where would it be most effective to build? Or would, would it be more effective to buy? And so they're working on that right now already. We did talk about within a certain radius of downtown where we are here currently located and what's available. And so they're working on that. And then on the elections, we, I'll talk to Lisa again about the timeline. Like when's our drop dead date to, to make a decision on that? And then I'll get some more information on the courthouse maintenance items and the acquisition of land on the Far East Annex, what options are out there and available? And is there any public-private partnerships available that we could consider for that? And I'll bring those back. And it'll be probably, I need to see how long it's gonna take Public Works to finish their estimating on the different options available. And, and I need to, after we get through budget, to, to be able to focus on this.
And I know, you know, the city has also talked about a regional command on the east side and a large presence there. And I wonder if there's not an opportunity for us to work with the city on maybe buying some land?
A joint.
On land that they're looking at buying.
Thank you.
Perfect, thank you. I think that is it for this morning, this afternoon. Thank you all so much, we were a great, this is today's meeting at twelve thirty-nine PM.
This is today's meeting at twelve ninety P M.